Half a day, Torres. Thank you for being here. We are now going to call the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture to order. Today is Thursday, April 8, 2021, and the time is 3:10 PM. So notices for this oversight hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Wednesday, March 31, and again on Tuesday, April 6, 2021. And the notice was also published in the Guam Daily Post on Wednesday, March 31 and Tuesday, April 6, 2021. This is all in accordance with the open government law. So this hearing is hosted by the Guam's Legislature's MIS staff, and we are utilizing a hybrid meeting format for combined face-to-face and also virtual attendance via Zoom. First, I will do an introduction of the issues for today, and we will hear from the Guam Incestral Lands Commission Director and the Commissioners, and then we will hear from the panel of senators and receive their questions. And each member of the panel will be allowed to post questions for one round, and then we will go around if we have more questions, and of course, we will have to take into account time concerns. So, and then we will hear from the ancestral landowners in attendance who may provide testimony. And I see that we have several of them physically present here with us today, and we also have a list of those who are on the virtual platform. Participants will be kept on mute and on the Zoom until called upon by the chair to provide testimony, and we will ask that because there are several of you listed here, that we keep testimony to three minutes for today to ensure the timely progression of this hearing. So individuals attending, please keep your video unmuted. I mean, sorry. One, you testify, of course, unmute and keep your videos on. We need to see a video while you are testifying. That's part of the rules of the Guam Legislature. All right, so I'd like to thank my colleagues for being here. I have a vice chair with me, Senator Talina Nelson. We also have the Legislative Secretary, Senator Amanda Shelton. Thank you, senators, for being here. I believe that on virtual, we also have Senator Tony Ada. I'd also like to thank the Guam Incestral Lands Commission. So we have with us today the chairperson of the commission, Mr. Ronald Eclavea.
Senator Peter.
Sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry. Senator Peter, this chair is too short. Senator Peter Turley is here with us in person as well. Thank you, Senator, for being with us today. All right, and so for the Incestral Lands Commission, we've got the commission, the chairperson of the commission, Mr. Ronald Eclavea. We have the director, Mr. John Birch. We also have via Zoom the other commissioners, including the vice chairman, Ronald Leguatia, the secretary treasurer of the commission, Maria Cruz, Commissioner Angie Camacho, Commissioner Luisa Westling, attorney Nicholas Toft, Kathy Blas, the administrative officer, Joey Leon Guerrero, Land Agent Two, and Andy Mendiola, Department of Labor, trainee assigned to the Incestral Lands Commission. We also have Mr. Jeffrey Rius, Commissioner Jeffrey Rius. See, just once again to all the commissioners for being here today. I felt like it was very important, so I'm glad. Thank you for joining us. Of course, I want to thank the ancestral landowners and claimants who are present today to provide testimony and to hear the information that will be provided. Again, this hearing, it's an oversight hearing of the agency itself. It may not, it's not necessarily directed to resolve any of the specific claims that any landowner might have with the agency, and I would have to refer those claimants to the agency itself and hope that they can resolve particular, specific issues. But we will hopefully address some of the larger issues that the commission is facing. There are many more that we are not talking about today, such as finances and some of the other things, but we're going to make our way methodologically through those things. All right. So for today's agenda, we've got four main items. The first was the identification of ancestral landowners of federal excess properties that are returned, designated return for return, or requested to be returned to Guam since 2011. Second on our agenda is an update on additions since 2011 to the Guam Incestral Lands Commission Excess Lands Registry. Third will be an update on the beneficiaries of properties listed in the Guam Incestral Lands Excess Lands Registry or Conditional Awards Registry who have not been contacted. And fourth will be a short discussion on the proposed rules and regulations for the land bank program, or the extinguishment of claims, or the award of just compensation. Now, this particular item on our agenda will require an additional hearing, I am sure, on the particulars of the rules, but we want to get a general discussion today so that everybody can be thinking about it, understand where the commissioners are coming from, and be able to provide input that's positive and, you know, helps us to move forward. Prior to this hearing, the committee provided Executive Director Birch and Commission Chairperson Eclavea with a request for updates on the aforementioned items. And so before we begin, I'd like to put one slide up that lists the registries that the Incestral Lands Commission is responsible for, according to Chapter 80 of Title 21, Guam quote annotated. First is the Original Landowners Registry. It's a listing of all the lands taken under the names of owners of record at the time whose properties were confiscated or condemned by the United States of America or by the government of Guam on or after January 1, 1930, as well as other pertinent location and ownership information in relation to the property. The Original Landowners Registry shall be used for the purpose of confirming an applicant's property claim for future extinguishment upon receipt of just compensation as defined by this chapter. The second is the Excess Lands Registry. It's a listing of all lands declared excess by the federal government or the government of Guam, including lands in the future declared excess by the government of Guam. The Excess Lands Registry is used for the purpose of identifying a specified lot or lots of land with which the commission may use as just compensation in extinguishing ancestral claims. Third is the Claims Registry. It's a listing of all claims to ancestral title filed by applicants. Fourth is the Conditional Awards Registry. It's a listing of conditional awards of just compensation. And fifth is the Ancestral Title Registry. It's a listing of applicants' granted land title in return for the surrender of all their ancestral property claims. The duty, I mean, the Incestral Lands Commission has a huge duty, responsibility as a trust to manage, to investigate, record, file, report, respond to requests by ancestral land claimants for remedy, especially those whose land was taken by the United States or by the government of Guam after January 1, 1930, to come up with just compensation in the form of land, and we will discuss that further when we talk about the rules and regulations. And so I just want to thank them for all the work that they have done for all these years. There are several members of this commission, if not all, have been with this commission, I would say, 20 years now. So they have been really putting their heart and soul into it, and I'd like to now hear from the director. He has testimony to present that gives a very good overview, I think, of what the commission has accomplished and what they are facing today. Director Birch.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Vice Chair Nelson, Secretary Shelton, Senator Tulahe, and Senator Ada. Good afternoon. Thank you for inviting us here today. My name is John Birch. I'm the Executive Director of the Guam Incestral Lands Commission. Over two decades ago, over 20 years ago, in 1999, the Guam Legislature established the Guam Incestral Lands Commission. The commission is responsible for facilitating the return of excess government lands to its original landowners or their heirs, except in circumstances when land is clearly under existing public use or are non-ancestral lands. If land is retained for public use by the federal or local government, the commission is to compensate based on the rules that the commission passed, the original landowners or their heirs with funds from the Guam Incestral Lands Commission's trust. The funds in the trust are accumulated from lease proceeds of non-ancestral lands. The commission holds title to these non-ancestral lands as trustees on behalf of the dispossessed ancestral landowners whose land was taken by the United States government or the government of Guam on or after January 1, 1930. At the end of fiscal year 2020, the Guam Incestral Lands Commission had approximately $13.8 million in the land bank. And although this may be considered a substantial amount, it is not enough to justly compensate all the dispossessed ancestral landowners. There are thousands of original landowners and/or their heirs waiting for compensation. In the John Bond files alone, we have approximately 2,000 claimants, and yet we also have a list of lands released for the return that remain unclaimed. And in an effort to identify people associated with the unclaimed lands, the commission published a list identifying these lands a couple of years ago. As of today, we're still trying to identify these people. In 2017, the commission did create draft rules and regulations for the distribution of land bank funds for the extinguishment of claims and awarding just compensation, but it was rejected by the Attorney General's Office because, one, it lacked an economic impact statement as required by 5 GCA subsection 9, 301E. It contradicted the purpose of the rules to establish a mechanism for compensation to the beneficiaries of the land bank trust for the extinguishment of claim to their ancestral land. And three, the statutory definition of the land bank beneficiary is ambiguous and is sufficient to govern the distribution of land bank funds. And fourth, the lack of legislative guidance violates the separation of powers doctrine. Our goal is to increase the number of federal funds, of federal returned lands, and provide just compensation to the families who will not benefit from the returns. As of today, the commission's aggregate amount of land returned is approximately 2,643.12 acres. However, the commission cannot move forward with its mandate to compensate dispossessed landowners whose lands cannot be returned until the land bank rules and regulations are finalized. So in an effort to resolve this, this past January, the commission submitted proposed amendments to clarify Title 21 GCA Chapter 80 to define just compensation for those dispossessed ancestral landowners as described in the Attorney General Guam's letter of April 26, 2017. And on behalf of the commission, we look forward to working with the 36th Guam Legislature to resolve this longstanding issue. And donklo nasu zusma asin. Attached, I also included the list that you may be interested in, but it's a long list to read. But it's a list, that's the list of the lands that have been returned and have, up to this day, have been unclaimed.
Yes, we will post that on PowerPoint as well later on in the agenda, but thank you, Mr. Birch, for your testimony. I think it gives a very good overview of the accomplishments of the trust so far and the huge challenge that it faces.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
All right, so again, the first item on our agenda is in regards to the identification of ancestral landowners of federal excess properties, and I'm focusing today on those properties that were identified since 2011. And in 2011, prior to signing the Record of Decision, the undersecretary of the Navy promised to pursue a net negative strategy for the United States Marines relocation from Okinawa to Guam, which promised to result in a smaller DoD footprint on Guam after the buildup than the DoD held in 2011, and to return underutilized land to the government of Guam. Since 2011, we still have not achieved a net negative. Specific properties promised to be returned since 2017 and, again, listed in the NDAA 2019 are not yet returned, and at least one was removed from the list and will not be returned. I'm also concerned that land being returned may bypass the Incestral Lands Commission altogether, and so we are going to discuss these matters in details at this point. So this slide that we are looking at right now shows the 2017 report from the Navy to Congress, where they point out that they have since 2011 returned 608 acres, three parcels of land. So that shows the 608 acres. And so, by the way, all the documents that we are going to be looking at today have been made available to the senators. They are also going to be, they are available on my website, and I have gathered these from different websites, so you can also find their sources there. But if you need to look at them immediately, you can look at senatorterlahi.com. All right, so this just shows the land that was returned since 2011, and that is 608 acres, three parcels. If you could hold on one second, it includes 440 acres parcel behind South Vinagadsan Housing, 50 acres on Route 1, it says Guam Road Systems Joint Agreement of 1959, and then 117 acres Route 4, the same Guam Road Systems Joint Agreement of 1959. In the same report in 2017, the Navy reported that it planned to return 125.1 acres. That's the number circled there on the bottom. I don't know if they can make that slide bigger. Is that clear to you? Is that slide clear to you? I can't really read it. I don't know if they can make it bigger. For those who are watching at home, I want it clear for them, please. And it's, this 125 acres is going to be repeated here today, but so this is 2017, and they planned to return 125.1 acres. That included 78 acres from the Guam Land Use Plan of 1977, 37 acres from the Island Wide Power System Transfer Program, 11 acres from Hoover Park Annex or USO Beach, and parcel C Marble Cave Annex. This report also discussed the reversion of 80 acres of Marble Andy South from GDOE to USDOE and the subsequent transfer of that property to the Navy. So all 25, all 125 acres here were listed in 2017 as pending environmental studies. That's that column on the far right. It also listed the properties it intends to keep, and it would retain over 36,000 acres. So these, again, if it's not clear for you, I'm just giving an overview, but you can go in and look at the details of the properties on the websites, or you can call my office and we can give you a copy of all of this. So this just shows the properties that they plan to retain. Okay, so totaling 36,000 acres. All right. In 2019, Congress mandated in the NDAA that the 125 acres promised in 2017 to be returned continue to be included in the annual reports, and mandated that reports be published on the website. The NDAA 2019 also set up a formal process for governors to request the return of additional parcels, and I want to thank Congresswoman Bredalio, who at the time had introduced a bill to do exactly these things, and those were incorporated into the NDAA 2019. In her bill, she had requested the return of additional acres that were not included in the NDAA 2019, however. So again, in 2019, after this NDAA was passed, the Joint Region Marianas made the report in response to the mandate by Congress, and it indicated that no additional properties had been transferred since 2011, and the same 125 acres listed for return in 2017 and in the NDAA 2019 were listed again in the JRM 2019 report as undergoing environmental studies, same as in 2017. This report showed a very slight change in the Hoover Park USO number of acres from up to six instead of 5.5 as it was in 2017. So in 2019, there was 0.5 acres added. All right, so pursuant to the NDAA mechanism that Congress provided, okay, we're done with that slide now. In November, GIDEA made a report of potentially releasable federal land. They listed 2,869.83 acres and 17,000 acres of submerged lands as potentially releasable. GIDEA's list included the 125 acres listed in 2017 and in 2019. However, I found no formal request from the governor at that time for return of these lands after the GIDEA report. I just couldn't find one. There may be one, but I haven't been able to find one. So GIDEA issued another report in June 2019 with an identical list as the 2018 GIDEA So that was in June 2019, another GIDEA report, and in August 2019, the governor, in a letter, requested return of 2,596 acres, the same as in the GIDEA report, and the 17,031 acres of submerged lands. So pretty much the governor attached the GIDEA report to her request. So almost one year later, on July 2020, the Secretary of the Navy responded to the governor's requests, rejecting most of the requests except for nine parcels totaling 93.66 acres. And this is just my calculation from what I could gather, because they don't total their acreage in this most recent response. And so, but they did acknowledge the 125 acres that had previously been listed as They removed from that 125-acre list the Harmon Substation Annex, which is 9.9 acres, and that was on the 2017 list and the 2019 list and the 2019 NDAA law by Congress, but the secretary in 2020 said it could not be returned, and the reason he gave is that this parcel is located within the footprint of DoD property and supports power distribution for the DoD. The Department of Navy is open to converting GPA's lease to uneasement. And so they did give rationale for all the properties that they rejected from being returned, and so those you can also see in the Secretary of the Navy's letter, a list of the properties that would not be returned and their rationale. They also specified conditions for those of the 125 acres and these additional nine parcels, and some of these conditions included retain uneasement on the Navy side, the Department And of course, well, I think we have a slide that just shows, all right. Those with an arrow on the left, I added that, those arrows, those show the additional nine parcels. There are five on this page, there will be four on the next page, but all the rest of the land listed here that is possible for return, those were already listed in the 125 acres since 2017. Okay, so, but you can look in particular at these nine parcels. Well, I'm gonna, if we could just hold right there, I'm gonna read the nine parcels because that is not clear up there. So again, we're going through these documents. I am hoping that those landowners who have been waiting for the return of land for many, many years can be able to look through these lists and identify whether their properties are on these lists or not, and that they can have a say in, you know, whether they will be kept on these lists or removed from these lists, or whether other plans might be made of those properties. Okay, so the nine parcels added in 2020. One is west of Route 3. One is titled Tumontank Farm. One is titled Lot A7A and B Anderson Bearagata Annex. It's my understanding that this is the lot that contains the Eagles Field. Nimitz Hill Annex C2, Upper Heights Quonset Hut site, and the 6,000 submerged lands, 6,000 acres of submerged lands. And then they put some, three parcels that were not listed in GIDEA's report, and that is Mangila Lots 2285-5 and 2306-1, the Sasa Valley Annex, and the Harmon Booster Station. Four acres, or 2.7 acres out of the 4.3 acres of that property. Okay. And of course, they made a list at that time of all the property and/or the inventory that they planned to retain. And again, because these properties are listed specifically, I'm hoping that landowners can also see whether their particular properties are listed in this decision by DoD that they cannot release those certain parcels. And this is very relevant because of the rules and regulations that we are going to discuss in a few minutes as to, yeah, and the commission's plans. All right, finally, I think we have a map, and in this map, it shows the properties. In yellow are the nine parcels, the property, those are the nine new parcels, about 99 acres. The properties in blue are the same 125 acres listed since 2017, still pending return. And these maps, again, they're all available on the website. All right, and so... All right, and so now, if it's okay with the commissioners, I'm going to just ask you some questions so that we can focus in on some of these issues. Has the commission been made aware of these potential land returns? And are you able to identify and notify potential landowners that their properties have been returned since 2011 or have been removed from the list of potential lands to be returned?
Bueno, Speaker and Senators. The Board had maybe a couple of years, just a hint of some of the releasables from GIDEA in an informal, you know, communication. But as far as the full details of these potential releasable properties, where we were not really fully aware of the scope, we did have an idea. And the information is pretty in-depth, but we're very, very, of course, concerned about what's potentially to be released, and hopefully all of it would be released. But most of the information is pretty new to the Board, considering that it's all new and there's negotiations that between the front office and the federal government is something the Board doesn't really, you know, partake in. But we're informed later on with the information. So a lot of the information here is the Board has just made aware of. We knew there's some properties coming back, but we don't know the full impact of it.
All right, thank you. The GIDEA reports, they did acknowledge the help of the Ancestral Lands Commission and the Department of Land Management in compiling those lists of potentially releasable lands. So I want to thank you for that. And yes, so I realize, and I think the Director explained it to me, that you're not technically notified of even potential release of land until the deeds are done, and that's when the commission is formally notified. And so I guess, yeah, by this hearing, it's what I wanted to do was see if the commission would, you know, be willing to get involved in keeping track of these lands since it's been since 2011 and that, you know, they've been listed 2017. Many of them, 125 acres at the very least, have been listed since 2017, still pending. And I'm just thinking that if the landowners are made aware that they are on that list of 125 acres, that they could decide what they want to do about that. And so my next question to you is, has the commission been made aware of any excess lands identified for return since 2011 that will be reserved or used by the Government of Guam for another public use? And are the landowners notified in advance of that?
Okay, I can't speak for the rest of the commissioners, but as for me as the Chairman, I knew through the political grapevine that they're looking to build a new hospital. And the potential was first for, I believe, the old, the Nimitz Golf Course, and I think it moved to Eagles Field. So that's the only information that I know of with regarding to, you know, the return of some lands that's going to be kept by the local government. That's about it.
Madam Speaker, may I speak on that?
Yes, please.
Okay, when the Eagles Field issue came up and the construction of a new hospital was advertised, we had an idea of a general, the general location where it's going to be. We don't know exactly where it's going to be. But what I do know, it's not, and was not even on the list of properties to be returned. What I gathered after trying to research and talking with land management and others is that basically there were three options they were looking at, and one was the Nimitz Golf Course. I'm not aware of what the other one was. But my understanding, Eagles Field was considered the most appropriate because of its centralized location. But my understanding is still being assessed because of this close proximity to the radar site that's located up in that area and the probable effect that it might have on the hospital's electronic equipment. But I do understand that the governor and people, maybe from the governor's office, may have contacted or have contacted the Mangilau Mayor, because the mayor had concern of the continued use of the field for sports. And basically, that's all I know. And I'm not even sure if it's going to be returned property at this point. And we're not really sure as far as ancestral lands is concerned of the exact location, whether it be Eagles Field or just north of it. Like I said, there were three options, and this is the most appropriate. It's the one that has hit the media. And so as far as I know, it hasn't been solidified as of this point. I've been trying to get the answer for you, but it's, pretty much what I get, it's still being assessed because of the concerns that they have. And it's, and as of today, it's still not on the list of returned lands.
All right, thank you. And so, yeah, my intention here is not to really discuss the details of anybody's plans, but it's the general idea that if we have a list since 2017 of lands that are supposed to, promised to be returned, I would like the landowners to be notified. I would like them to know if their status changes and those lands are removed from that list and no longer going to be released. They should, I would like them to know as soon as anybody knows. And I guess I'm asking the commission's help to identify the landowners on these lists that have existed since 2017. And I'm willing to help you to notify them, to make sure that they are just kept abreast and that if the Government of Guam has plans for these properties, and I can gather that you're, Mr. Chair, you're learning about it the same as I am in the media, if the Government of Guam has plans for these properties, that at least these landowners are aware that their lands are on the list and they can be diligent and be vocal if they would like to or participate in what is going on as much as we can allow them. So that's my goal. It's like, if you can help, because you are the expert at identifying whose lands these are on this list and how to notify them, because you've been doing this for many, many years now and have been doing a very good job. So, Mr. Eclavea, Mr. Chair.
Yes, let me see. Yes, we definitely will, considering all the information we've got now. The Board has been very proactive throughout the years in urging the release of excess lands, even non-releasable lands. So the Board is, has been very, again, proactive in, through either the political means, our leaders, our senators, the governor, and our congressmen, whenever we see the possibility of lands being returned or not releasable. So we've always maintained that we're the true resolutions in urging the release of all releasable lands and non-releasable lands, believe it or not.
All right, great. Well, I hope that, yeah, we will be hearing that more now about, at least these on these lists. And I think we should pay close attention to the changes on the list over the years, right?
Definitely.
Since they're still pending.
Definitely.
Can you just be very clear if I stated it correctly or else correct it? How does the government notify the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission on return of property?
Madam Speaker, my understanding, since I've been there, not yet a year, but my understanding, the way it occurs is there's a group that negotiates and discusses these issues with returned properties working out at the governor's office. And from there, should properties be returned, then land management's notified and GIDEA will be notified and they'll participate in that. Ancestral lands is basically the beneficiaries of this. And so we don't get the notice until land management or GIDEA sends us deeds and/or property maps. Of course, we would like to be at the top of this line, and I'll be requesting that we be included in that process. But as of today, that's not the case.
All right, thank you for your answer. I too am concerned that if we're talking about ancestral landowners, I would like them to know as the process is going along, and I would like them to be, continue to be informed. And so I'm looking to this commission as really the only one I can see in the government who might be willing and able to stand up for these landowners and to keep them abreast of whatever we can find out in this regard. All right. Okay, I'm going to move now to point B of our agenda, and that is, so since 2011, have there been any lands added to the registry? So the Department of Defense reported in their reports, as I showed you earlier, that 608 acres was returned. Has any of that 608 acres been added to your excess lands registry?
Madam Chair, can I ask our land agent, Joey Leonguero, to speak on that? Because to my understanding, on Site 8 identified on your map, we may have 444.3 acres, so...
Okay, Joey, if you're on virtual, if we could switch, Joey?
Yeah, and I thank him for being here because he had his vaccine dose a couple of days ago, and he had severe side effects from it. So he's still recovering, he's teleworking, and he's trying to do his best to be a good citizen and help us bring down the issue of the coronavirus. With him getting vaccinated at ancestral lands, we are at 100% vaccinated. But he's suffering the effects right now, so...
Thank you very much, and I understand Joey, you've been very instrumental in helping this new director and the commission to continue with its work, because you're one of the few land agents that is available for this commission.
He is the only land agent we have.
All right, so Joey, can you tell us if any of these 20 lands listed in the 608 acres in these reports to Congress have been included on your excess land registry?
Yes, Madam Speaker, so of the 608 acres, the South Finigayin parcel has been transferred to Ancestral Lands Commission, and we have since then returned any lands with original land claims. We have returned those portions to the families. The other two parcels, Route 1 and Route 4, we haven't received any information whether those have been officially transferred to Gov Guam, but I can do the research. And as far as the landowners, I've already identified those, landowners of Route 1 and Route 4. But, you know, these are Route 1 and Route 4, these are still in use, so I don't think these are lands that we can return back to the original landowners.
So the Route 1 and Route 4 properties might be, continue to be used by the Government of Guam for road purposes or easements?
Yeah, they're going to be, yes, ma'am.
All right, and Joey, so I just want to make sure I heard you clearly. You said the 440 acres behind South Finigad's housing, those have been put into your registry and that you have completed return of those properties to ancestral landowners?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great news, thank you. Since 2011, has any other property been added to the registry from lands from the Department of Defense?
Just that one parcel, ma'am. That's, nothing else has been added.
Which one? What do you mean? Oh, just this one, the 440 acres that we talked about?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Because that's what my records are showing too. So these lists show that since the 608 acres were returned in 2011 and 2012, that nothing has been returned since then. To the Government of Guam? Well, we don't know about the Government of Guam, but they definitely have not gone to the excess lands registry, to the Ancestral Lands Commission, and so they've not gone to the landowners, correct? All right, so we're going to move to item C on our agenda, and that is the list of properties that the Director and the commission have come up with several years ago, and these are beneficiaries who we were not able to contact. If we could just put that list up, I'm going to see if this is legible. So what I wanted to do here today, just very briefly, was try to, I guess, boost your efforts somehow, put it out here so that anyone who has any other ideas, they can send to the commission as to how to contact these people. These are people whose lands have been, or these are families, estates, whose lands have been returned, the commission has not been able to contact them. For senators, it's on page 13, and this is the list. And so this was published in the newspaper, what year again, Mr. Director?
2019.
Okay. And 2019?
2019, yes.
I'm sure the commission will debate whether to publish it again, but again, I'm soliciting from the public and anyone else if there's any other ideas as to how we might be able to contact these people. And a lot of them are listed as the heirs of, right?
Yes.
And some of them, however, Mr. Director, are listed as pending research. And if, could you just explain why those are pending research?
That's basically because I believe we haven't had anyone, although the lots were returned, come up to identify them for these lots. I'm aware personally that with my own family, none of us have been, put our names in, although we do know that Route 4 is being returned. My grandparents, Isabel Cruz and John Garrido Cruz, they own a good share of Route 4, but that's an easement, so I doubt they ever get it back. But our names are not listed, so that's the problem we've had here. Recently, we identified one person who came into our office down from Agate, and just because he was talking about another issue, he brought up a name that our land agent, Joey Leonguero, identified with and asked him if they were related. So there may be one more that we may identify, but that's the only way we're bringing people in, is simply by haphazardance or accident, just that it's because we're there and they're there and we start the discussion. So a lot of people are unaware of this. Like I said, my own family, who should be on a list, is not on the list, and even my in-laws' family that we worked on property back in 1986 to 88, and we were able to get the majority of it returned. Some of it was kept for the power, the 110 KVA lines that now GPA owns, and they've got a couple of acres of that that have yet to be returned. But we did get the majority returned even before ancestral lands was ever created. So there are a lot of people out there that are unaware that they qualify. I don't know if my land agent, Joey Leonguero, can add to that. He's more aware of this list than I am.
All right, I'd like to take this time to recognize, forgive me, Senator Brown, Senator Joanne Brown, who's joined us in person in here in the session hall. Thank you, Senator. All right, so, Mr. Chair, are there any other plans as to how you will contact these people, the heirs of these people on the list? Now, these are lands that you do have already ready to return, is that correct? Mr. Chair, Mr. Eclavea?
I'm sorry, okay.
Do you have any other plans as to how you will?
Well, we've been discussing ways that we can be more effective in trying to find a way to find these families, you know, and social media and basically through advertisements. The advertisements are expensive, and we're very, we've been limited in, we're open to ideas. I mean, we've been trying to do some things nationally, maybe, you know, to try to reach some of the landowners that might be in the state somehow are unaware. But we've been making, you know, efforts to try to do this through advertisements, word of mouth. I tell people in my social gatherings, hey, you know, if you know anybody, or you might be one of the owners of these properties we have that you might not know about. But we're open to ideas, you know, given the fact we're limited with our, you know, funding, how we can do this, but we're open to ideas. We've been using social media and media advertisement. We've been using social media and media advertisements.
All right, and is this posted on your website?
Yes, yes, I believe it is, yes.
All right. It's posted on my website as well, and I'm sure the senators will have other ideas what to do, so we'll get to them.
We're open, too.
Yes, all right, great. Okay, and so finally, we are on item D of the agenda, which is the proposed rules and regulations. And so the director highlighted, I think, in his testimony today, what the issues are that we are facing with these rules and regulations. But I would like to have all the commissioners have a turn at just describing what they believe the issues are and why the commission has proposed rules and regulations and changes in law as opposed to just going forward with the current law. My understanding is that the change that you are proposing is very significant. It changes the beneficiaries, and it changes how they will be compensated. So these are for those whose land is not returned, and it started out as those whose land was retained by the government of Guam and thus not returned to the landowners. And so the mechanism in the statute is to compensate those landowners. So we can begin with you, Mr. Chair, if you could describe your understanding. Oh, and I want to give just a little background, because you guys, I think I learned over the years that because you've been there, all of you have been there very long, this is a very contentious issue. Who the beneficiaries were going to be, whether it was going to be expanded or not, how they would be compensated. Of course, it's contentious. We have people for decades who have been waiting. Their, you know, sina are passing away without any relief or sign of this type of compensation. So I understand that it took a long time to get to the point where you are at, and that it's somewhat of a compromise that the commissioners came to. So I'm just going to go with you, Mr. Chair, since you are here in person, and then I'm going to switch over to the virtual commissioners and then have them also... So the goal for me is for the public to understand where these commissioners are coming from, for the senators to understand. And again, we're looking for resolution of this and the ability to move forward. We need to move beyond what looks like a stalemate that we have had for years and years. And so we just have to do that together. So that's the goal here, is just to make sure that it's well explained, and so perhaps we can move forward together. So, Mr. Chair, Mr. Ron Eclavea?
Okay. The question is, yes, very, is a very important question. Of course, that's very contentious. I mean, we've had our major differences in the board discussing the rules and regs, of course. And for years and years and years, we were debating the language of the enabling legislation. And the language says one thing, and then it seems to say another in another section. And we went back and forth for years. And the board really didn't get much guidance from either the legislature itself or even our legal counsel. So one of the major issues was the fact that we could not come to a, well, the extinguishment issue. And the language specifically states for extinguishment. And in order for us to try to start somewhere, we were going to need to have proper appraisal values or, you know, to have some idea of how to come to a number to extinguish the claims. And then come to find out, I find out that it's not possible to appraise these properties, you know, the federal lands, runway, how do you appraise? You know, some suggestions was, "Well, let's see what the nearest property outside the gate would be and try to go from there," which is really not actually usable, per se. So I came up with the suggestion that, okay, if we try to extinguish the claims, I was thinking to have perpetual payments until they get their lands back. And then when they get their lands back, if ever, that's extinguishment. That was just my opinion. We were stuck. And of course, the landowners themselves would have the opportunity to either opt in or not. But with this situation, I guess they would all opt in because they're not losing. They will not be losing their interest in their properties, per se. They'd still have perpetual payments until they get their lands back. We were stuck, basically. The board, half of the board or more than half, half of the board wanted just to, you know, the government of Guam, the properties that the government of Guam kept, those are the beneficiaries, and the other half is no, it's everybody. Now, the language of the enabling legislation seems to say both. But then one says no, the other one says yes. So we were stuck, and that's the best scenario solution we could give with the rules and regs that we presented to you with what we had. I'm sure a lot of the commissioners have their say, they want to say, you know, but that's the best we could do. And so, given that, our legal counsel drafted a language that we presented to you that allows us, for you to amend the enabling legislation that would allow us to do that because the Attorney General, when they got the rules and regs, it was, we couldn't implement it, it was unenforceable.
Right, but it was a decision by the commission to write these rules and regs kind of different from the statute, to go beyond what the statute had dictated, who would be beneficiaries and how they would be compensated. Is that correct?
Well, it, I don't think that's what our intent was when we came up with the rules and regs. We just wanted to find a way to come to an agreement and get these rules and regs out.
All right, okay, so what is the difference between what the statute says, who the statute claims are the beneficiaries, and what the rules and regs say are the beneficiaries? Who are, what's the difference in the beneficiaries?
You mean the definition of the language?
Yeah, who would be included? Who would you include?
Okay, I'm not sure I understand the question.
Okay, so I had proposed earlier that the statute reads that those whose property had not been returned by the government of Guam.
Right.
They had been excess, returned by DOD, but kept by the government of Guam, that those persons would be eligible as beneficiaries, right, to this land trust?
Yes, yes.
To be compensated?
Yes.
All right, but my understanding is that the rules might go beyond that class of people?
Well, the language seems to include others.
Right.
Besides those lands. The language seems to include others.
Yes, so you're saying you're...
Meaning, you know, the properties that the federal government still have now. It seems like they, the language seems to say they are beneficiaries of the trust also.
Right, okay, so that's what the commission kind of concluded, was that their interpretation of the statute, and I know that, and AG has done an in-depth analysis of what the rules say and what the statute says. And so it looks like, yeah, the interpretation by the commission at the time was that, how I'm reading it is not what, how the commission read it, that they had seen that there were other beneficiaries that were included, right? Which is fine, because now that's why we're here. We're here to get to a resolution of these things.
If I may say, the board kind of like, we could have gone either way on the language, but we decided to err on the caution side of it, per se, if there's an error.
To include more, more of them, more beneficiaries?
Just include everyone.
Yes, everyone.
Just include everyone, yes.
Okay, and so, yes, the Attorney General did say it's vague, and so that your interpretation was also reasonable, I think.
Yes, okay.
All right, and sorry, I want to recognize, I think Senator Taitugue has joined us. Thank you, Senator. And, okay, so now, if it's okay with the audio team, we're going to go to the commissioners who are on virtual. And I'm going to start with the vice chairman, Mr. Ron Leguatina. Mr. Vice Chair, I don't see him though. Are you there? Okay.
I'm at eight.
Yes, if you want to just put your thoughts on these rules and regulations on the table and for us in the public to understand. Thank you.
Yes, Jesus masi, para bena tunga to dui manautautano, na tordungisintin momi, para benayamzutatinetanumizu, manusinya. But with that thought, Madam Chair, it is with great pride and honor that it is, that we want to, we, it's in our heart to protect the original landowners, the heirs that are alive today and with the spirit of the ones who have passed away. And as for the beneficiaries, now, whenever we deed out these properties, we give it back to the original landowner at the time of taking. That way, that individual, whether it be, it's la la la, but mati, you know, in the spirit that we know that he or that she, that individual, was given property back under his name is right. And then the heirs and the families, let them deal with it after that. But that's one of the points that we may give it back to the original owner at the time of taking. You again, you know, like I echo the chairperson, not chairman's comments on that again. It said, yes, like he said, how do you appraise the runway? And that's me. 2156 in Tijen. We have 14.5 acres there. And how shall we, shall we appraise that value? I mean, me, I had it my way. We should be receiving royalties right now. Guam Airport Authority should be paying us each time that plane lands or each passenger that gets down there should be paying royalties to the original landowners of Tijen. You know, I have, I have so much, so much. It's a lulukluk ya'ao. I have even individuals that were, that own businesses and airline company back, that runs, that rents, that rents up there at the airport, his own property, family owned, and he's paying to rent for his business there. You know, the airport should, you know, give brand him, you know, some decency to, you know, as a payment, you know, don't have to pay, this is your property here, you know. But to me, like, I don't know, I'm just very, it didn't, you know, fikigano ne. Because since when did the airport or any airport get in the business of land takings, you know, from the people? In other jurisdictions, airports, they pay. They buy the properties to build their airports and their runways. Here, they just take it outright from our people. You know, that's how far, and I'm a meteule. You know, I just need to cool down, but, you know, that's how I feel. And then the compensation, like our chairman, let's get, let's get these people paid perpetual payment. Keep paying them until these lands be released. Unperpetual payment. But you know, my idea is, I would, at least at the time being, you know, these lands are already designated. We know our property. We should work together with the airport. You know, they're making over $500 million a year at one time before the pandemic, but at least work there, you know. My idea is just that, you know, we have a list. We can get our people. We even have to pay to pay in the parking lot, and that's our property up there. You know, that's how, it's, you know, work something out. That's one of my ideas. Give us some sort of ID, us original landowners, all our heirs, and when we just go to the airport, stamp here. Don't have to pay parking lot there. And that's how, how I'm really deep into this, and that's why I'm here. I'm Madam Chair. It's a mumutzi imantautauta. Still up to now, us original landowners from Tijen have not been compensated. And many other people, landowners on one side over there, have gotten their lands back, they got back. And we're, it's the same group of people. Same Tijen landowners. But certain groups got compensated, certain group got their lands, and we didn't. And many are still, and they're dying every day. But, you know, I'm glad, like, Madam Chair, na un la lat nos estina, you know, because, you know, you're right, you know. We don't, we have, we're not in that bargaining position right now. With all due respect, but once we get those lands back, we will make sure we do our diligence to give it back to the original landowners because I know my family too, my dad's brothers and sisters, they're all gone, there's only one left. Tungo ratetenan, fui afaisino, afaleu, what's up with the property up there? Because the, and look at that, we give out lands to, to back the original landowners, yet me, a member of the commission, and I still have not gotten our lands back from my family, the familiar gotti, and kuneu 2156. Spensai lo, ta yano sinintetekule. That's how I feel. And if any properties, for example, the ego feel, you know, hashifamaguun, you know, think about that. But I'm gonna say, busy ego feel, I know we're in a pandemic, but don't take it away from our kids. And by the way, bring it up, bring it back, if it's returned, give it back to the original landowners and let the government of Guam buy it from these people, from the original landowners. Just compensation with the value of it right now, you know, ezegile. I don't know, Madam Chair, I get emotional, but that's how, you know me, and I tell you, I'm a fighter. I will die for my people, my language, my culture, and my history. Ezegi, that, you know, and I will, if I get removed, so be it. But I will fight and defend the rights of the Chamorro people. They were the inefresi in aire, tanu, lingwahi, kutura. Yeah, na element. And I read what dather da, to be a free man in my own homeland than to be taken and overruled by the federal government. And put that on the record. Jesus masi.
Jesus masi, senor. Can I please have you clarify your understanding of the landowners, that the original landowners of the property where the airport is currently at? That's your family, I understand. But is it your understanding that they are covered clearly by the statute as that they are entitled to receive compensation from the trust because those properties were deemed that they would not be returned by the government of Guam to the ancestral landowners? Is that correct?
I believe. Now, we fall into the category of the rest now being compensated. But also, you know, I want to find out, I don't know, I left out that, like our chairman said, you know, everybody is covered, you know, but, you know, like Fena, right? You know, Fena Lake, you know, that, that used to be land, but they dug it up. Now it's water. We have original landowners that their land turned to water. You know, we have people that have property in Naval Station. Tantona Kostu, she just looks at that fence when she's growing up as a little kid, crying every time she passes by there, no compensation. You know, and Sumai area, those properties. Anderson, those people get the, they get an opportunity.
Right.
A property. They got their passes, you know.
Yes, so that is my understanding of what the commission has done, is they have expanded from just not the landowners whose property was not returned by the government of Guam, but they've expanded the beneficiaries of the trust to include those properties that have not been deemed excess yet, such as Sumai and such as Fena, that they would also be included on the list of beneficiaries.
Yeah.
All right, okay, thank you.
We must stick together as a peoplehood, now.
Okay.
You know, the injustice applies to them as well.
All right. So now we're here from the Secretary Treasurer of the Commission, Commissioner Maria Cruz. All right. So now we're here from the Secretary Treasurer of the Commission, Commissioner Maria Cruz.
Good afternoon, Speaker Turli and the rest of the senators. I've always been um, one sided on the current proposed rules and regulations, because my opinion is, uh, somewhat different. I believe that the beneficiaries should be defined as only those, uh, heirs or only the ones whose land have been released as excess land by the federal. However, it's uh, the government is continuing to use those properties. And also, uh, we will use the same provisions and rules and regulations so for future release of federal properties on landowners that will never see their properties returned simply because of continued a use of the local government. That is my interpretation. And it's only reasonable. You know, uh, in, in addition to that, we have another question on the fair market value of the properties. We do have an existing law in place by the government of Guam that any properties acquired from the government, whether it be for private laws, uh, roads condemnation on family combination, condemnation, whatever, whatever, or however it's acquired. Um, at the time it's acquired, the fair market values are used to compensate the, uh, landowners. And that is in the existing law. Now, the problem we're having right now is that uh, that these properties were returned since nineteen ninety-nine. So if we were to, let's say, use the fair market value then, uh, it is only reasonable that we can calculate the interest payment that they would have received. Or I mean, uh, interest payment that they'll be getting now if we were going to, uh, to compensate them. And let me see what else is my thoughts here. And, uh, yeah, it'll be a lot easier for us to determine the methodology of disbursements on these funds. Now, of course, a lot of people will be hollering that in nineteen nineteen, nineteen ninety-nine, fair market value is so, I mean, who has a record of that, right? So we can maybe make it a little bit more pleasing if we can move up to maybe ten years. But even the war's claims, okay, the ten thousand dollars uh, for survivors are those eligible for war claims? That was a long time ago. That ten thousand was a long time ago, and they still continue to use it. So that is my, that is, uh, my, uh, feelings on, on, uh, on the rules and regulations.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Cruz. Thank you for your service on this commission for many years. We'll now hear from Angie Camacho, Commissioner. I believe she might be the newest commissioner. Is that right, Angie?
We have Jeff, who was confirmed after me.
Okay.
But yes, we're the newest and, and, uh, to be honest, um, these rules and regulations were drafted prior to, um, me being on the commission. So uh, to be completely honest, I'm not very familiar and I wasn't a part of drafting the rules. Um, but, but upon listening to the, the commissioners prior to this, I do agree with Commissioner Cruz on, um, uh, the original intent of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. And, um, yeah, but we, we have, we're cut out, like you pointed, uh, out to me when I was, uh, being confirmed. Um, now, now I get it. So we do have a lot of work to do. Um, my position though is really just to be fair. Um, and I, I'm looking forward to working with our new director and our, our commissioners. And I hope that Commissioner Jeff and I can bring, um, freshness and new ideas to, to the commission.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Camacho. And again, for those listening, I'm receiving some text messages. So the website is Senator Turlahe dot com. And for my colleagues, if you look at, there's in your packet, a letter addressed to the Honorable Benjamin J. F. Cruz uh, back in twenty seventeen. In that, attached to that letter is a copy of the Attorney General's opinion, a copy of the resolution made by the Lands Commission, Ancestral Lands Commission at the time, and a copy of their, the proposed rules that the Attorney General had reviewed at that time. All right. So we are now on Commissioner Louisa Westling.
Sorry about that. Good afternoon, um, Speaker Turli and, um, senators that are here present into Director Birch, Chairman Neklevea and my fellow commissioners. Um, I have been with the commission since two thousand seventeen, two thousand sixteen, I think it was. Sorry. My memory sometimes lapses here. And, um, I came in when the rules and regulations were being discussed. And, um, I echo the same sentiments that our chairman has expressed and our vice chairman and our secretary treasurer, who are a, a wealth of knowledge, a, um, a spirit of, of, of encouragement and so passionate, so very passionate, as you have seen, um, in, in the desire to be fair to all that have, um, lost property during the war, those who we realized may never, ever uh, regain a title to their properties and how to justly compensate them. Um, that passion and, and that desire to, um, to make right what was wrong in the past still, still remains with all of us here. And, um, I know that there have been challenges that, um, without, I think, proper legal guidance earlier in, in the game, that, um, and the, the commission's desire to make sure that no one is left out as far as receiving what, what we felt that they should be justly compensated for, for the decades, for the decades of waiting. Um, but I understand too that we, um, that there was still, that there are some, um, um, changes or amendments that need to be made to, to the law that would allow us as a commission to, uh, to, to be able to, um, effectually and to be working within the parameters of the law to carry out our duties. Um, and I believe we're still waiting for, um, those requests that were made. Um, if you look back on the Attorney General's, uh, letter of two thousand seventeen where they pointed out, uh, where we had, um, where our original rules and regulations that we proposed had insufficiencies. Um, I know that we've been working on that to get those matters cleared up. And so we hope that, um, as we move forward, that these things will be made clear as far as, um, the distribution of the land bank funds. Uh, my colleagues have already, um, voiced some of the, um, problems that we've had as far as value, um, valuations for the properties and determining how much, you know, each dispossessed owner maybe um, can, can receive. Um, and we have wrestled as a commission as to when that fair market value should be established. Some felt that it should be at the time of, of, of when the properties were returned. And as our secretary treasurer mentioned, uh, perhaps interest added on, others have felt, no. You know, it should just continue, um, as far as, um, um, working with current fair market values. So those are things that we as a commission have to still come to terms with, but, um, I believe everybody has really the best interests of the, of the folks of whom this commission was created for and to look after their interests, basically the dispossessed owners. And to, at some point in time, prayerfully, um, be able to, um, give them fairly and justly what they've been waiting for, for all these decades. I thank you for this time to speak.
Thank you, Commissioner Westling. Now we have the final commissioner, Mr. Jeffrey Rias. Mr. Rias, you're the newest commissioner.
Yes, um, half a day speaker and, uh, other senators who are present and of course our director and, and our chairman. Thank you very much, uh, for everything. But this, um, very interesting, uh, commission, we, um, we talked about, I also remember doing our, uh, our, um, our, 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 what is it? Our confirmation hearing with you, Senator, and, and you mentioning, asking if we would have, if I would make the time and will I be willing to, you know, of course, if I would make all the time to be here for the commission. And I said I would and, and yeah, I, I really, this, this is a very, very busy board. And we do have a lot on our plate. And, um, you know, we all have good intentions to do what's best for the stakeholders. And it, it is, it is a very difficult, uh, decision for, for the board to make on, on a lot of these things. And I understand, you know, I, I listen to our, um, our chairman all the time and just, and I can, I can see how difficult this is going to be. And, and this is, the, the rules and regulations is before my time. But I know that we have had, or we have talked about, uh, talking about our inventory of, of lands and that that was going to be discussions in the upcoming meetings. And then we were going to go and of course discuss how these things were going to be handled. And we talked about amongst ourselves, amongst, you know, in meetings that, that not, not as a group, but just when we were run into each other that there's just so much work to do. And, um, we all want to do the right thing. We, we all want to do the right thing. And with our, with our vice chair, you know, not only being, being on the board, but also with his family and, uh, and, and their properties that Tizen is, and he said it himself, you know, that he, he is one of those family owners that is not receiving any compensation, but also understands and feels for the other landowners as well, that they should also be just be, be compensated as well. That means a lot. And that means a lot for a fellow member to not have, to just think that, you know, all members are, you know, all, all of our stakeholders have all suffered and that they all should be, um, should be getting something, some, some kind of monetary, uh, payments or, or some sort. So I mean, we, we all have good intentions. We all have good ideas on how to do this. I, I always think that, you know, and I've said it before, even during my confirmation hearing that, um, I, I leave it to the stakeholders. I, I leave it to the people to decide what is best for their property or, you know, and on how we should handle this, because we, we want to do this right. We, and we, and it's, it's just one of those things we, um, it's, it's going to be hard to please every single one, every, every single person. But we have to do the right thing. And, and if we all can come to a senses and, and we all have, and that's kind of why everyone kind of has other differences, our differences is what, what allows us to come to understand of each, each other's idea, because it might be that same idea of, of another stakeholder. So that's, I, I think we, we have a good team. We have a really good group here and we all just want to do the right thing. So, um, that's tough. We are, we are in a really, really tough position. But we are going to do the best we can to make sure that the, the stakeholders be, be compensated.
This is mercy, Commissioner Rias, and thank you again for your service on the board and your commitment to working through these issues. So again, I'm going to, uh, open the panel now for my colleagues. And I want to remind them that we do have uh, ancestral landowners who are here who also want to discuss some matters. But I want my colleagues to be able to touch on the points that we've brought up today. And again, we are trying to ensure that the ancestral landowners are informed of the status of their properties, even if they're promised to be returned, if they're pending return, if they've been taken off that return list. And if the ancestral land commission could assist in that, I am willing to help you in that regard. Uh, and of course, with the recent announcement that the government of Guam might be, uh, intending to keep some of those properties for its use as instead of, uh, you know, channeling it through the ancestral lands commission. I think the ancestral lands commission can, uh, help us to, to work with the landowners in that regard, to let them know, to get their input on that type of thing. Um, and I would also encourage, um, well, and we are going to, of course, work. And I said in the beginning that we're going to have another hearing to discuss the specific proposals for um, the rules and regulations. So there has been no new draft of rules and regulations that the, the commission has proposed. They have proposed that the law be changed so that they can, you know, uh, use, you know, um, use the same rules and regulations and that then, because the law's been changed, it would comply. Uh, they would be consistent with each other, right? And so we are going to have a separate hearing to discuss those in detail. And, but I wanted to get that all out on the table here as much as possible so that they, we can be thinking about what is the best way to, to move forward. And again, I want to encourage landowners to contact the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission to receive updates on your property, to review any of the lists that we've talked about or the maps and so that you can keep informed us to your own property and especially that list where we have property that has been returned, is ready to be returned to families, yet we have not been able to contact them. Okay. So now we're going to begin, uh, questions with the vice chair, Senator Nelson. And we will hear from those who have been waiting to testify as well, right after this, uh, brief round of questioning. Senator Nelson.
Thank you, Speaker. Uh, Mr. Executive Director and Chairman Neklevea. Um, I appreciate your testimony here today, and I appreciate all members of the commission being present. And also, um, hearing the challenges that you are going through as a commission and, and to also understand some of the um, beliefs on how you feel that the landowners should be compensated. And so my, my first question is, is in this letter dated April twenty-six, two thousand seventeen, and this is where you came in, Mr. Eklavea, saying that the commission has come to the legislature many times to ask for assistance in as far as determining the definition of the statute and the rules and regulations that you want to promulgate. And it says, um, in this letter, it says, and I know you're going to have another hearing, Speaker, on this, but I just wanted to real quick touch, touch on it. So it can also be a focal, a focal point for the next hearing. The legislature directed the commission to promulgate rules and regulations to administer the commission's functions in a fair, just, economical and expedient way and establish fees and specify materials reasonably required to accompany applications in order to extinguish a claim in, in favor of a just compensation award. Twenty-one GCA subsection eight, zero, one, zero, four, Bravo. As part of its duties, the commission is mandated to manage the lands in the land bank and to establish rules and regulations pursuant to the administration, administration adjudication law for the Guam based trust. The, the resulting income shall be used to provide just compensation for those dispossessed ancestral landowners. And it goes on to further state, as written, however, the rules do not provide for just compensation to the dispossessed ancestral landowners. Instead, the rules state that payments from the land bank trust fund are considered an interim compensation and shall be perpetual until property is returned or for an agreed amount or period. This section also explicitly provides receipt of payments by an estate does not waive any rights of the estate. And I think this is kind of in the tune of Mr. Leguana stating that, you know, that they should be compensated in perpetuity until they get their land returned or some kind of royalties given. For example, he used the airport. And so are we still looking to utilizing this type of approach? As is stated, and in the future, like, where do we go from here? Is this still a preferred method that you, the, the commission would like to move forward in?
See, the, the, the issue with the, the rules and regs, I mean, enabling legislation, I would say, is the, uh, is extinguishment. And we could not find, uh, any way to, to go about doing that, given the limitations of, of what we're dealt with, with appraisals. It's just going to be a nightmare trying to have some, uh, get to a proper value. And it's just going to be a nightmare. And so, hey, we, 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 like I said, Eric included, uh, on the, you know, caution sign included everybody. You'll get a ratio of what we make. And you have perpetual payments. And you, you don't lose the, the, you know, the rights to your property. lose the, the, you know, the rights to your property. And until you get, if you ever get your land back, that's an extinguishment. That would, that would just, you know, but the, the language of the enabling legislation says we can't do that. It's contradictory. That's what we were, can I add something else real quick? Just for the history of this so that maybe you can have a better idea of what the board was struggling with all these years with the rules and regs? I was of the opinion that, I said, wow, did the legis, the, the legislature, in drafting this legislation, the government of Guam basically made itself liable for these federal lands? And the injustice was done by the federal government, but the government of Guam is putting the onus on itself to pay this? And we were struggling because we don't want to, to do any more injustice to our, these land takings, whether you're from Anderson Naval Station, we don't want to, it's very touchy. It's very, very, very touchy. And so what we did was, in all fairness, I'd like to bring up to our former chairman, Tony Ada. When I brought that question up to him and he kind of gave a response that kind of like made a little bit of sense that, you know, that the Tramor Land Trust kind of like, you know, the government of Guam kind of put some lands aside for almost the same thing, same, same principle. So I was like, mm, okay, that kind of like, kind of makes sense, I think. So that's how some of the board was looking at it. And so we were, we were, we were wrangling back and forth. How do, how do we draft these rules and regs? And so that's how we came about with, again, what we gave you. And since it doesn't comply with the legislation, we had our legal counsel draft language that would allow us, if you implement those amendments, would allow us to, to, to have these rules and regs.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. And then for the, the alert from the Guam Ancestral Land Commission, the advertisement that you sent out in 2019, what steps have you taken to alert landowners of the additional lands being received and/or the current ones that you're not able to get ahold of? What additional steps have you taken? Have you gone through different families? Have you gone into the history of the, the property? Can you just explain for the public what steps you have taken and the reason why you're unable to find these landowners? Or is it just that we are issuing names and putting it out in the newspaper and then that's as far as we go?
To the best of my recollection, we basically had discussions on, on reaching out and we've, we've done some social media on our website and I think advertisements. But as far as like, you know, like I said, we're open to any suggestions on how to, to be more effective in finding these landowners. We're, we're open to it.
So have we tried to go through different family trees and look through who are the living relatives of, or the living heirs of the original landowners or if the land, original landowners are still alive?
Given, given the, the, the limitations of our staff, we've been very, very, we've been very, very, very limited throughout the years. And some, some of the, our, our land agent was also going back and forth helping Tramor Land Trust. And I don't think we really have the resources or during the time had the resources and this was the best we could do was what I just.
And how about now?
Well, we can look into it again and see if that's, yeah, and maybe our land agent could, could chime in on this if it's, you know, the scope of the work of that.
Right, so you're, you're right, Mr. Chair. If we don't, if you don't have the resources, then we need to ensure that we give you the resources so that you can actually go down to the Tramor genealogy and look how we can reach out these landowners. Because apparently us sending advertisements is not giving, is not getting the result that the commission wants as far as finding these landowners. And so if there are additional resources needed, Mr. Director, this is something that you need to inform the chair about so that you can actually do some research through whatever documents we have in our registry to try to find, find the families or the heirs or the landowners. If these, and then, and my next question is this, and this was my last question, Madam, Madam Speaker. If, if the government plans on keeping the, keeping some of the properties for, and you mentioned, Mr. Eclavea, for a new hospital, right? Well, have we even, has there even been any discussion about who those family members are and have there, have they even been involved in any type of discussion on how they see or what they would want with, with that land? Because I'm, I'm thinking that you said that some of this property is going to be used for a new hospital, so you probably know where the property is or you have a general idea. Have we reached out to those landowners, asking them and how they feel about it or what they would like to see since it is their property?
You know, a, a lot of the, the information we got regarding, I mean, we knew there was a plan for a new hospital, you know, where the exact area, we just basically got the information recently. And whether it's set in stone too is another matter. We don't know if it's set in stone that it is at Eagles Field or where, where, wherever it was supposed to be in the first place. So we were just dealing with speculation. We don't know, have any, you know, full confirmation on it. So we could just alert family, you know, family, landowners that, hey, be, be aware that your properties, your properties might be taken for the hospital. But the board, like Vice Chair Ronald Leguanyia mentioned, is that we, we, we are of the position that the properties should be given back to the landowners. And if the government sees fit to use the proper, you know, mechanisms, you know, to, if they, and deal with the family for the hospital, for, for anything, basically give that properties back to the original landowners, you deal with the original landowners. But that's our position.
Yes, and thank you for that because I think this is something that we should also include in the next hearing, how, how we're, the families are going to navigate through this, right? If they're anticipating land to be received and then the government eyes something, I mean, we don't want them to lose out and then the government claims them in domain and then, you know, it's a disservice for all those families that have been waiting for their lands to be returned. And so I support that recommendation that, that you just brought up, you and Mr. Leguanyia's, give it back to the family and let the family discern on how they would approach it. And so what is the way forward on us being able to help the commission get the resources to start getting the properties back to the families? Is it just a matter of fixing the rules and regulations or is there something else that needs to be done?
If I could just jump in here, there's a lot more they've asked for, including, you know, financial, we have to address some of the financial limitations that they have and the potential that they have. So that's, we purposely did not include that in today's hearing because I think that deserves a hearing all of its own, but yes, many other ways.
Okay, and then, I'm sorry, thank you, Madam Speaker, for that. And then one more question. So we saw this news article break and it's probably the first time we seen it was the ancestral lands commission getting the, that was a negative land returned, right? And so our office received some, an influx of concerned constituents saying, oh, this is our family's property, what do we do? So can you advise the people of Guam or the public what they need to do, that if they know that this is their family's property, what is the process that they need to take to navigate to the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission?
Well, yeah, I, you just said it right there. If they're, if they're, if they have any idea about their properties being released and the potential for the local government to be, you know, using the properties to get ahold of our agency. And we'll, we'll try to give them as much information as we could on, with the latest information we have on any of the releasable properties.
Okay, and then how do they ensure that it's registered properly? Is there a registration process or I just call up and say, this is my name, I think this is my, this is my family's property?
Yeah, they basically would just call up and, and maybe they might have the information on the, the lot number. And, and our land agent is very good. We're so fortunate that he's still with us all these years, even though he's, he's been very, you know, sickly. A big kudos to Joey, he's very, very good.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Madam.
Senator Nelson, our legislative secretary, Senator Shelton, oh, I'm sorry. So the vice chair would also like to chime in on one of the answers there. If I could, we could go to him real quick. Again, I don't want to take up all the time for the others that want to testify. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, real, make it real quick. Yes, we do have the, Madam Chair, Sis Massey. Just, we're hoping right now, through just this, this hearing right now, that any of you out there in public right now, you hear the stories from your families, your grandparents, you know? I am sure they, they, they have some little knowledge of land that have been taken from, taken from them. So just call us up, call our office and give us an original name, the grandparent name, grandfather, and we, you know, and that's how far, and we would like, thank you again, Senator Nelson, for your input and inquiry because we will be putting this on our top agenda on our next meeting is to, to keep working more in finding out these dispossessed landowners and the heirs. We want to work also with front office to provide us support. We want to work with our congressman, you know, he, he, we have more Tramoros in the United States, a population more Tramoros in the United States than on Guam. So we need to work closely with our congressman. We need to work with, with whatever resources we have. But let me tell you right now, we only have our director, we have Kathy and we have Joey and we're glad we have Adeline and the other, I forgot her name, that's working with Kathy. And to do research is, is a very tedious matter, but if we can get people to help us and help our, because we are providing whatever support we're giving our director and on our commission and on our, on their office. You know, like I said, I got one comment again, we just found out, to me, you know, I'm just being straight, we just found, and the first thing that came into my mind is, ayayfamagun, you know? And let's, let's not take, if the government is going to take it, let's not take it from the kids' activities. We have enough problems in society, let's not hurt the kids again and let them stop playing their football and go out to the streets and play it somewhere else and end up doing other things, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Leguanyia.
So that's it.
Yes, Sis Massey. And so legislative secretary, Senator Shelton. Thank you. I'm sorry, sorry. Let me just say for the record also, I think Director Birch forgot to mention that he did in anticipation of this hearing, also sent to us a list of those landowners who may be involved in the parcel of Eagles Field. So that, that list is also on our website and available at the Ancestral Lands Commission. And again, I, I call the Ancestral Lands Commission for any details on any of these properties. And I'm sorry again, legislative secretary, you totally have the floor now.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. While we're on the topic of the, the published list of property, I wanted to ask Mr. Birch, I know you, you mentioned that maybe one family was identified since this list was published through another family member. But it's been a couple of years, it says in your testimony, so has anyone else come forward or was it just that one successful case where you were able to identify another family?
That, that one just happened within the last week. I've been, I'm pretty new at ancestral lands and I guess we could ask our land agent, Joey Leon Guero, if there were any. I'm not sure if there were any. If Joey could chime in on this? Joey, can you answer that question? Has there been any other landowners in the onclaim land list? Have we received any other than the one that we got within the last week?
Yes, we received about maybe five. And you know, again, 2019, that was one year, but then 2020 was the pandemic. So there really isn't much contact we had as far as the claimants or anybody calling our office. A lot of the landowners' heirs don't know their family tree. So, so when Senator Nelson was asking us to, you know, look up the family tree, that's a little bit difficult because us not even knowing who the kids are, that's difficult for somebody to do research. The person themselves has to do the research. And a lot of the research too, just first and last name is not sufficient. You need to know the middle name too, because there's more than one John Cruz or, or Joseph Cruz or anything like that. And, you know, a lot of the records too, they transpose the last name. So it's, it's a lot of research. And again, a lot of the, the heirs now, they don't know who their ancestors are. So, you know, it's, you know, even if we, you know, I'm, even if we try different avenues, we may not be able to get everybody to file a claim, but I mean, let's try though, let's try.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad to hear that it was more than just one family that was reached by this publication. And I don't mean to stay focused on, you know, the effectiveness of, of how this list has been put out, but I, I'm interested, I'm curious about it and because I want to make sure that we're able to give you all the support that you need and reach as many of the original landowners as possible. So thank you very much for that information. And I guess the more we talk about it, the more we highlight it here, hopefully someone out there is watching and goes to look at this list for themselves and does that research as a family to see if they are in fact included here somewhere. And then I wanted to touch on this map that the chairwoman provided with the new parcels identified to us in, in yellow. And I know it was mentioned that maybe this is some new information to all of you, that these, these are newly identified lands. Can you walk us through the process of how you folks at Ancestral Lands are made aware of this and then how these pieces of property finally get onto your excess lands registry?
Okay, Joey can go through that. I'm glad that he's on today because I, I was prepared for this. The yellow are submerged properties. Joey, do you want to walk Senator Shelton through this on how we get this information?
Basically, just once the, the lands have been accessed by the federal government to the government of Guam, then the Department of Land Management notifies ancestral lands commission and that's when it goes into the excess lands registry. So that's, that's how the, the process works.
And so these lands that are.
It doesn't get input into the.
I'm sorry. So these lands that have been identified here as a new, newly returned land or identified land, what is the timeline for them to be added to your excess lands registry at the commission?
Based on the, the report that was given, it, it just says it's pending transfer. There wasn't any specific timeline other than I think between 2022 through 2026. And again, that information, I am only getting that from, from the joint informations website. And I believe that's the information that's Speaker Turlo, he also has provided everybody.
Okay, thank, thank you very much for that. And I'm, I'm sure people are eager to know, you know, when they, when this will be on that excess lands registry and when families can start to, to really begin the process. And then lastly, I wanted to ask about the rules and regulations and I understand that we will get to that probably at a later hearing in, in a different forum. But you, there was mention of returned lands, it sounds like quite recently, Mr. Birch. And I'm wondering what, what does, how does the commission handle that now without any rules and regs? I know that we're focusing on how to distribute the, the funds, the land bank funds, but I am assuming that these rules and regulations will also govern how we handle return of land. So how are we handling it now before we have those rules and regs to govern us?
Right, right now, our land agent Joey would identify who the owners of the properties are and. and we would advise them of it, and they would apply for it. And then with that, we would extinguish, extinguish their claims if they get the property back. The big issue with the rules and regs is defining who are the beneficiaries of the land bank? And how do we compensate people whose properties will, they will not ever get returned? Property that are example under the airport or on the easements of the roads. And what the commissioners have included were not just the people that were identified by the public law, by the public law that had, where excess land was identified and then returned to the government, and then the government kept it for public use. What they did with the proposed rules was to include everyone, even those whose properties have not been declared excess and are not returnable. That's the major issue. Are we going to include those people as beneficiaries? Those whose properties have not been returned and still are held by the federal government? Or are we going to only exclude them and only include those people whose properties were declared excess, returned to the government of Guam, and the government of Guam kept it for public use? And should the government of Guam be responsible for that only or for all of them? Now, if we're going to be responsible for all of them, we're very much aware that it's a very hefty price tag. I don't see and know if Gov Guam can afford that. And I understand why the rules or the law was written that way, but it was written in such a way that was ambiguous as to who are the beneficiaries. And the commissioners saw to it that they felt, the majority of them felt at the time that a great harm was done to all the landowners whose lands were taken and that they were taken unjustly. And they feel that all of them should be, should benefit from the non ancestral lands or the Spanish Crown lands as beneficiaries. And that was the decision they made, but because of that decision, the, that was the major issue with the rejection from the Attorney General's office. And the Attorney General stated that as the rules are written, as they're written in other sections of other parts of the law, that when you start speaking of the government, in our case, you're speaking of the government of Guam and not the federal government. And therefore it identified that certain sections here in the current statute that created the ancestral lands, that the only beneficiaries according to the AG's office would be those people whose excess properties have been returned to the Gov Guam. And Gov Guam now must compensate them through the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission because their, their properties were used by government of Guam. And a Gov Guam is not responsible for compensation to those people who have not had their property turned and are still kept by the federal government, and that the federal government should be the one responsible for that payment. That's pretty much what the AG said, but that's not the action that the commissioners took. The commissioners felt that all landowners were unjustly taken advantage of back during those days, and their properties were taken from them. Yes, the military or the federal government is going to say that they did put money up less than, I believe it's about 400,000 or something many years ago. But many people chose not to take any money and not to accept payment because they preferred to have their property and not the money. The value of land in Guam, we all know, that has been passed down through us from our ancestors going back thousands of years, is valuable to us, not just as a piece of land, but, but it's our heritage. And I believe that's why Mr., our Vice Chair, Mr. LaGuana, Mr. Eclavea and others feel that they all deserve to be compensated, whether it be by the federal government or the government of Guam. But the way the Attorney General read the law is that the law identified through various ways that it, that only, the way the law was written, that only those people whose properties were declared excess and returned, and Gov Guam kept, that Gov Guam would compensate through the land bank. And that's the big issue here. Who are the beneficiaries and who's going to be responsible for paying, for paying for this? That's the million, $10 million question.
Yes, thank you very much, much, Mr. Birch. Thanks for sharing all of that with us to help us better understand, you know, a very long history of this process and better understand the frustration of many original landowners who have been patiently waiting for decades and then waiting again on these rules and regulations. But that kind of, I hope, lights a fire in us to understand, understanding the urgency of everyone waiting and as it was shared today, that many people are passing on, still waiting. And so I, I hope that we will be able to come to some kind of solution here from this body if it's possible. So thank you for that, and thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you very much, Senator. And yes, so again, the, the properties that are returned are able to be processed at commission hearings after research is done, and the commissioners, they actually adjudicate the return of those properties to ensure that they get the correct landowners or the correct owners.
And then we can extinguish that claim.
Yes. All right, so the rules and regs are for those whose properties will not be returned? No property, so they are, we're looking for some type of compensation? Okay, thank you. And we'll go now to Senator Pito Turlohi.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank the Director and the Chairman for, for your input today. I just wanted to ask, first off, what is conditional award registry? What does it mean? Because I really don't know.
Again, our land agent would be better, be the better person to answer that? Joey?
The way I understand the conditional awards registry is basically you, the Ancestral Lands Commission entered their decision into that registry after, after a title hearing. And then upon completion or upon extingu, or after a deed is issued or compensation is paid, then they're taken out of the conditional awards registry and put into the ancestral title registry. So it's, it's just an in-between step between the claims registry and the ancestral title registry.
Pretty much, Senator Pito, if I may?
I'm still not getting it, but that's okay, that's, that's all right. You know, because the main issue that we have here right now, Madam Chair, is, you know, we need to have that refined rules and regulations. And I'm pretty sure that the commission doesn't have all the, the landowners of, that has been taken away from, from government of Guam. So, and I have to agree with Mr. LaGuana. What is stopping us from giving back those landowners their property? And unless we do the rules or regulations, maybe we can accomplish something like that. But as long as we don't have those rules or regulations, we cannot move anywhere. And I have to agree with Mr. LaGuana. It's simple, give it back to the landowners. You know, we talk about 200-some acres, 210 acres that, that's excess federal usage right now. 210 acres. The governor is asking 2,000 acres to be returned back. Are those 2,000 acres? Does it belong to original or do, do we have landowners for those, for those 2,000? Because I know that maybe the governor is not going to be asking for 2,000 acres if it, if it's not rightfully taken away from original landowners. So we need to sit down and really refine the rules and regulations before we make any decision to return those land back. And if we have the rules and regulations saying that whoever claims of their property being taken away from the federal government or even from government of Guam, give us the names of those people, because some of those people have passed away already. We don't have records of those people that have passed away already, and maybe they didn't pass it on to, to their, to their families to take over the ownership. So does the commission have those listings of, of landowners that where their land were taken away by the government of Guam or even the federal government? Do we have total names of those people? And I know we, we probably don't. So we have a lot of work to do, my friends. We have a lot of work to do. Just listening to some of the, the testimonies here, and I wanted to ask, do you have the names of those landowners that was taken by government of Guam? Do you have the names of those, those landowners that was taken away by the federal government? Do we have the complete names of those people? I doubt it. So unless we come up with something like that to get in the rules and regulation and find out. We need the commission to do the rules and regulation in order for us to move forward with making the decision on returning lands to the original landowners. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Sis Massey, Senator? Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I mean, I know there are a lot of issues of the history with regards to why we're here today, still trying to address the issue of land takings and trying to get just compensation back to the landowners that lost their property. Of course, many as all of us who have, who are descendants from those that lived during World War II have since passed away. And I know there's a lot of challenges with it. I know we're not going to all have that addressed today, but as you mentioned, Madam Speaker, you had a couple more individuals here that wanted to testify, so to allow that process to go forward, I, I, I just have no further comments and look forward to hearing their testimony. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. I greatly appreciate that. And Senator Taitugui?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I too, you know, know that there's people outside waiting, but there's just a couple questions. I apologize for being late. I, I was listening though, online. There was a comment that was made with regards to the ability to know the, the process in which you are given that information on what properties are being returned back from the military. You know, I've worked with Joey before in 2017 quite a bit. And hi, Joey, I hope you're feeling better. And one of the things that he mentioned is a spreadsheet. You know, when we were working together on these properties that are being returned from the federal government is the need for a spreadsheet to identify properties and how they were returned and where they, they went. So just real quick, Joey, have you been able to achieve getting that spreadsheet? Hi, Joey.
Hi, Senator. So I believe that spreadsheet that you're referring to is, is that the same list that we were compiling with GEDA as part of the potentially reusable properties?
And, and you mentioned that the process, I, Mr. Director, you mentioned the process. You're almost like the last on the list to know when, when, what those properties are, where they are, et cetera. So that's something I think we need to correct as well. So I'm looking forward to that. I mean, that resonated and stuck in my head. Why you guys are the last ones to know? So I think you should be at the forefront, you know, when these properties are brought forward. The other one is, do you have an attorney that's assigned to ancestral lands?
Yes, we do. We have attorney Nicholas Tough.
And is he contracted with this ancestral lands? He has nothing to do with the Attorney General's office?
He is an Assistant Attorney General. He's with the Attorney General's office.
Okay, I just can't understand how they wrote that decision from the Attorney General's office, yet you have an attorney working from you, from the Attorney General's office in moving forward on the rules and regs. So that's something I'll talk to the Oversight Chair about, you know, finding someone. I think, I think ancestral lands needs their own attorney, you know, that's dedicated.
Yes, thank you, Senator. But that, I guess, the Speaker mentioned is another issue because that deals with our budget. As you heard earlier, we are a very small agency with huge responsibility. We have three employees and we're constantly putting out fires just to keep us working and keep our office going. So that's another hearing, I guess, that I hope we come up with so that we can resolve that and get the resources we need so that we could get our jobs done. You know, it, it's very challenging. I could let you know that. It's, it's been challenging. And it will continue to be so to resolve these issues, and we need to. This is very critical and very important to a lot of these people. We have people waiting on the hole there that, that need to get these things resolved, and we want to do it. But without the resources available, it is extremely challenging. And we only have one Joey Leonguero.
Right.
We only have one land agent, one admin officer, myself. And we're very lucky to, to have two trainees from Department of Labor that are 100% federally funded, but they only work four hours a day. So when you look at that, when, I'm very glad that Mr. Leonguero came on today because he is severely sick right now, and he made time because of his loyalty to the agency. So he's working from home. He doesn't have access to the land bank, but he made sure that he downloaded all the material he would need for this hearing, knowing that you may have asked more questions. So I really thank him for that, but it just shows the team that I'm working with, it's very small, but they're a great team. And I'm grateful to have them. And of course, my commissioners who have shown utmost support for us, knowing the difficulties that we're, we're facing at this point in time.
I appreciate that. And yes, I definitely appreciate Joey. I've worked with him when we were studying all this, the, the properties from the federal side. And I look forward to additional, but in the meantime, I'll just end it there so that we can hear the, those who are waiting outside. And I thank you so much for doing all you can, and we're going to help you. We're going to help you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. Again, thank you to all the commissioners who are here, and I'm hoping they can stay tuned for the testimony coming from some of the landowners today. And I know we won't be able to resolve their particular issues immediately, but I know with your help that we will be able to, to try our best. And again, we're all here. You, you've been working for years, some, many of you commissioners, and many before us senators have worked on this and tried to bring justice to those whose lands have been taken. And you're right, it is very similar to the Chamoros Land Trust. It is a justice issue. It is a reparations that the government of Guam has taken upon itself to bring, to try to bring justice, at least a little symbol of it, because we know it can never be whole. But, so I want to thank you again for your efforts, and, and with that, I want to welcome, while they are preparing to bring two people in to testify, I'm going to call on Dorothy Ujowa, who's online. She's got, we've got one online and we've got eight signed up senators. So thank you also for being here to listen to these landowners. Sis Massey, so Mr. Ujowa?
Hello, this is all very new to me.
Mr. Ujowa, are you able to turn on your video? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, this is all very new to me. I happened to catch the article in the PDN, and that's why I'm here, and I'm so glad that I am. And it's very, I've learned a lot, and I didn't realize how much was involved. And I give you all credit for the work you're doing. My family, I believe, my grandfather was the original landowner on part of the Tumontank Farm. I've been emailing back and forth with Congresswoman Bernalio when she was in office about the, the excess land. And that's why I'm here today, to learn more about it, to try and be more involved. And I just appreciate the work that all of you are doing. I am starting to have a clue as to how much work there is that you folks will have to do, and it's kind of scary. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ujowa. I understand you are in Florida and that it's 3:00 AM there, so I want to thank you for holding on and for testifying today. And when you mentioned Tumontank Farm, Tumontank Farm is one of the new listings of property, 23 acres, it says. So I'm going to ask the Ancestral Lands Commission to help you to track that. So this is on the Secretary of the Navy's list in 2020. He included Tumontank Farm, 23 acres of it at least, for potential transfer. So we will, we will talk to you more about that after this hearing. So thank you again, Ms. Ujowa. And so now.
Thank you.
others signed up to testify include Emmanuel T. Cruz and Maria LG Cruz. Oh, I'm so sorry. So Julia Ujowa Limtiaco and daughter. Julia Ujowa Garrido Limtiaco. Sayonara. Thank you for waiting. I know it's been a while and so we're putting you first because we want, I'm very sorry that you had to wait this long and thank you though for being here. So you're welcome to proceed.
Buenos and good afternoon, all of you. I am Julia Ujowa Garrido Limtiaco. I am the daughter of Maria Akinino Ujowa Garrido and Vicente Penhalega Garrido. My maternal grandparents are Marcelo Ujowa Ujowa and Julia Blanco Ujowa, I mean Akinino. For over 30 years, our family, including my mother, Tan Maria Akinino Ujowa Garrido and her sisters, Rosalia Ujowa Garrido Mesa and Carmen Ujowa Mesa, have fought for the return of our ancestral lands belonging to our grandfather, to Marcelo Ujowa Ujowa. Here with me today, there are outside, Jose and Ben, my brothers, and next to me, my cousin, Julia Ujowa Mesa Wustik, the daughter of Tan Rosalia Mesa. My mother, Tan Maria, up until her death at 96 years old, and her sisters, Rosalia and Carmen, up until their passing in their 90s, were strong and determined women, mothers and grandmothers. They fought for the return of their fathers and our grandfathers to Marcelo Ujowa Ujowa's land, which they held as sacred and as their father's legacy for his family. Our mother, Tan Maria, attended all ancestral and regional landowners' meetings, rain or shine. She attended public hearings and she participated in protest for the return of our ancestral lands to all of the original landowners. Tan Maria never gave up and she experienced the heartache and sorrow of being threatened by the government, by government officials to be removed from her father's land again and again. I remember my mother saying, "The only way to remove me from here is to take me to Pigo And she did stay. Her words will stay with me forever. No matter how hard she spoke up, no matter how hard she spoke up and firmly stood her ground, even well into her 90s. Our mother, Tan Maria, died not seeing the full return of our ancestral lands, as it is a large part, the Tumontank Farm Lot 5050 is still in the possession of the federal government. I am now 86 years old and our Ujowa family and uncle are tired, but we will not give up. The time is now to return our ancestral lands to the original landowners or with just compensation. Thank you, Sisus Maasi.
Sisus Maasi, sayonara. Mrs. Limtiaco, and thank you to your family who's also here, your brothers and your family. I grew up hearing your family petitioning for their lands. And so I want to thank all of you for your continued fight in that regard.
I did take parts also in the protesting when I was younger.
Yes, all of you.
Yes.
So again, thank you. And we will take note and all the commissioners are here also to do whatever we can to continue to help you in your, in your fight to get these lands back. Next to you, we have Julia Wustik.
Buenos.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I can't hear you very well. Hold on just a second. Thank you.
Buenos and good afternoon. I am Julia Ujowa Mesa Wustik. I am the daughter of Rosalia Akinino Ujowa Mesa and Jose LG Mesa. My maternal grandparents are Marcelo Ujowa Ujowa and Julia Blanco Akinino. My mother, Tan Rosalia, was very close to her sisters, Tan Maria, Tan Carmen, and together they advocated and fought for the return of their fathers and my grandfathers to Marcelo Ujowa Ujowa's land. I am here today with our whole Ujowa family, members to honor our ancestors, our parents and grandparents, and I support the return of our ancestral lands to the rightful original landowners. Sisus Maasi.
Sisus Maasi, Mrs. Wustik. I'm going to ask the senators if they have any questions or comments for this panel. Senator Pito.
I just want to thank my auntie for coming here and sharing their thoughts. Thank you. No questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator. Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and certainly thank you to the panel here for coming and providing your testimony. I know, Mrs. Limtiaco, you've been a neighbor of my auntie Lou for many, many years, just across the street. And it's very emotional to hear your testimony because I know it's something that, you know, we're in a situation now as leaders where we're trying to correct an inequity by the US federal government with the land takings that happened of our people. And I'm sure it's very frustrating over the years to not be able to get returned back what is rightly yours or get compensation for what is rightly yours. And it's one that those before you also who have passed on have not had the opportunity to see that. And I certainly appreciate the efforts of our current legislature and the leadership of our speaker and being very persistent in pursuing this issue because ultimately that is what we want to see, justice at the end of the day. And it's, we're not going to see it by the federal government, but by all means, to the degree that we can as elected officials, we have a responsibility to do that. And it's certainly in the cases, as the Speaker has brought up in her opening comments today, staying on top of this issue as much as possible is very important. I mean, it's the best that we can do in trying to facilitate as these federal lands are returned to make sure that it's facilitated, to get it back to our people. And I know we still have to define clear and clarify, as mentioned by the chairman and the members of the Ancestral Lands Commission, of how to do that. Because in some cases, we will not be able to do everything equitively because of the circumstances where some will get land back because it's available, others because there's current uses such as the airport where they're not going to get it back. And how do we get that compensation? I know it's been a very complicated, but also very emotional, very emotional process. So I do thank you for taking the time. I know quite a lot of effort and, you know, it's always hard when you have to look back to what you've experienced to come here and publicly express that. So thank you very much for taking the time to come and talk to us today.
I'm sorry, I can't hear who's talking.
Thank you very much.
Dispense that. Return that mic on. Thank you.
I just want to thank you, all of you, for all the efforts that you are doing for all of us, especially for the ancestral landowners. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Maasi, senators. Senator Taitugui.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Wustik, Mrs. Limtiaco. Thank you so much. Senators said it all, I mean, from emotion to not giving up. And I just want to say, Mrs. Limtiaco, thank you for saying those words that you won't give up. You know, you're a fighter. And I think you have a couple people on this, on this legislature, more than a couple, a few fighters who will continue the fight for you. So Sisus Maasi.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We will now call in Ben Ujowa Garrido and Joel Ujowa Garrido. Mrs. Limtiaco is the mother of our former US attorney, Alicia Limtiaco. We'll begin with Senor Ben Ujowa Garrido. Mr. Ben Garrido, you may proceed. Would you? Okay.
Hi, Guauxi, Vicente Garrido. Da, esta pa' gur inti guau, sta hodi. Esta me gay bari, matu, magi guini, sta, ti tu fungun. Esta be, tini tonu, nan matu, magi guini. Mas matu, nan, nanu si ben, pa' sigarit. Pa' gusta, me gay tumu, lenga, opetiu, sayonahu. Esta ne i, dato. Esta u, onkulu, ke. Da, estia, nan man, aali, noi, por esti, tanu. Langi, ma gaohi, na gwa, justicia, na gini, ki tanu, ti tapana, aali, guini. If there's truly a justice made on this land issue to be returned to the original landowner, we won't be here this evening. All these things would have been solved a long time ago. Esta matui tempo, ni, ma, fan manai, ta, to, ta tini, tanu, niya. Da, sta, son, na, pa' tapana, aali, ka, na, opa, gwa, pa' tapana, aali. Gausta, o, sunu, mungu, ke, na, pa' laobra, si, excess, excess. Di man hungyo, nan, e, excess, lan. Safa, na, itanu, ni, man, matsuli, ki, ka, na, in, manai, na, ta, excess. Excess, per du, lan, e, du. Man dagi, no? It's in ili, tanu, no? Gi, manai, na, ta, ki, ka, na, ni, ya, ki, dispe, higa. Balda. There's no such thing as federal excess, lan. There's no such thing. La, pa' gwa, ma, di, ba, siga, komentus, mas, ni, pa' gwa, por esti, tanu, noi. Da, ma, gwa, fo, dosu, poti, sti, na, hearing, u, go, supeti. Da, tebi, ni, to, ri, man, chamoru, ni, man, matsuli, tanu, niya, ki, dispe, sigera. To, du. Ati, hamia, pa' di, di, man, matu, guini, pa' gwa, pa' ni, gamnia. To, du, ni, man, matsuli, tanu, ni, fa' man, nanalu, ta, ti. Da, basta, man, man, nanga, lan, man, man, onkui, ta, man, biwi, ta, pa' pa', man, na, na, di, to, ru, esti, pandemi, ka, ne, fa' pa', si, esta, pa' gwa, ta, gi, guina. Check note, down, kula, na, check note, esti. Dan, o, talu, esti, si, man, chamoru, ni, man, man, a, tanu, du. Ena, si, man, man, protestista, dan, ni, man, activist. Desti, esti, chamoru, basta, no, na, bisu. I, per, sa, ni, ta, to, ni, man, chamoru, ni, man, activa, du, na, pa', anti, American, pa' anti, military, sa, ah, ye. Man, atatzu, noi, man, atatzu, por, di, diri, tsuta, gatsum. Gi, ni, na, zu, sta, ta, sti, na, diri, tsu. Da, e, du, na, man, atatzu, por esti, tanu. Sa, gwa, ha, gasa, u, to, matatzu, por esti, tanu. Sa, man, hungyo, ki, diri, tsuku. Man, hungyo. E, du, na, bali, do, su, na, chamoru, ta, za, o, tu, mas. Bali, do, su, na, chamoru, na, zahu, ilin, gwa, hiu. Zahu. Zahu, rasiahu. Da, esta, pa' gud, i, dato, onkulu, be, ta, tsu, por esti, tanu. Ta, ki, man, nanalu, ta, ti, gi, dre, niu, zo, pas, pas, pas. Pe, sedu, na, man, hungyo, justice, fo, pa' re, chamoru, si, ni, tanu, niya. Sayonara.
Sayonara, Senor Vicente Ujowa Garrido. Thank you for all your years of testifying, protesting, and everything that you have done to pave the path for all the landowners on Guam. Sisus Maasi. Mr. Jose Garrido.
Buenos, ta, dis, Madam Chair, dan, hamzuni, man, gay, gana, hulu, nan, matata, tsung, para, inhingok, ham, inhingok, ham, gi, pa' gwa, sinangan, ma, mi, pori, i, opa, para, ta, hu, pa' gwa, na, dia. Guauxi, Jose Ujowa Garrido. Ta, ta, Amun, Cleveland. And my testimony today is more the philosophical and historical aspects of why we're sitting here today and talking about our lands. The Madam Chair, good senators, the purpose of the public hearing is to identify ancestral original Chamor landowners of federal excess properties returned designated of federal excess properties returned designated to be returned or requested to be returned to Guam pursuant to the Department of the Navy 2011 net negative commitment and the Navy's June 2017 report to Congress net negative policy of Guam. Please note that the history behind the return and request of these lands is rooted in the unjust treatment and violations of the human rights of the Tamor people whose lands were taken and of the enduring effort and duty of the people and government to redress the taking of those lands and the atonement of those human rights violation. Today, we are seeing the possible atonement and redress of the unjust treatment and human rights violations that have been part of our subordination for over 350 years come with some measure of hope and recognition of our rights as total tunnel. When one does not appreciate the positive contribution from the unjust land takings, many true war takings, then try to see all the streets, the roads, the highways, government buildings, military bases, and parks and beaches that one enjoys even on a daily basis as a measure of the magnitude of the taking of these lands. All lands here and all of the Mariana Islands belong to the Tamor people. These are lands bequeathed to us by God, just as our human rights are God-given rights and can only be taken from us by God Himself. Simply explain, these lands do not belong to the government, any government. They belong to the ancestral landowners as their God-given rights to bequeathed to their children and their children's children. My name is Jose Ujowa-Gorido. And my mother and my father, my grandmothers and my grandfathers and their cousins are all owners of ancestral lands they will never see returned. But we, myself and my brothers and sisters and our cousins are standing up for the atonement of the violations of their human rights and for all those still waiting and in spirit. I want to give my appreciation to Governor Leon Guerrero for her deep support and persistence in recognizing the disdignity of our Tamor human rights to these lands. I extend my gratitude to all the past governors who, in their different ways, helped along this process. Thank you to the Guam Congress, the house of the people. I also extend my hand to the Navy, the admirals who in some way recognize the human rights of our people and hope to God that the same recognition be instilled on those who are still waiting the justice they deserve. When you free the land, you free the people of the land. And to one governor, we are coming home. That's the historical and philosophical aspects of my testimony today. It's been a while since this fight began. And it probably will take a while for this issue to end. I wish all of us the best, all the ancestral landowners. That, I wish them all, one day, they will receive their lands soon. But the fight will continue. And we must all participate in this fight in the ways that you could. You know, like, if you don't want to say anything about it, at least be mad about it. I can say thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and Senator Pito Terlahi, Senator Brown, and Senator Telo Taitegui. It's not easy to attend such public hearing like this. It always grabs your inner core. But we all have to, like they all say, and trying to bite the bullet, so to speak. Thank you for allowing us to express our opinion and to wish every one, every ancestral landowners success in receiving the justice that we all deserve. Thank you very much. And to the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission members, I know them all. And I am also a former Guam Ancestral Lands Commission board member. And I appreciate all the work that you're doing, to everybody. Sidoosma si, la, ni, te, tu, mi, zu. Thank you.
Mr. Gorido, Sidoosma si, look, it, by, it, so, mi, zu, that. It's, it's almost, eh, it's, eh, you, again, have inspired all of us, eh, all your family, by your continued perseverance and willingness to come to hearings like this. Are not easy, like you said, and to find what it is that drives you to continue to do that. I'm very humbled that you gave us such a beautiful testimony and the philosophy and the history. We need to be reminded of that more often. Sidoosma si. Senator Pito Terlahi.
Sidoosma si, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker. Ben and Joe, Agasa, Manita. And, eh, Malaguzu, pasigundu, gbenu, ma, me, then, she, and, Joe, man, hita, can, ah, car, ah, po, eh, ni. That, I, de, Clara, eh, eh. Na, grupo, grupo, ne, di, para, mu, 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 di, it, ah, no, eh, man, I, not, ah. That, stegi, Paul, go, no, man, gay, gee, goodie, no, ah, ah, ni. That, ex, pe, pr, she, ah, to, eh, me, na, la, go, ta, ni, para, half, eh, man, up, ah, kuls, she, this, eh, mu, 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 ta. Ni, para, ta, na, eh, it, ah, ta, ta, ni, direct, so, for, man, I, ta, eh, ni, tanu, eh, yeah. Comment, so, Sam, then, si, Senator Joan Brown. Le, ku, get, Joan. Half, a, su, mu, he, eh, ta, eh. Ne, di, para, ta, na, eh, it, ah, ta, ta, eh, ni, tanu, eh, yeah. Like, eh, Sidoan, then, I, Nancy. Le, na, ta, eh, sa, la, pe, eh, eh, government of Guam. Le, ku, in, tr, go, eh, le, ku, ti, ta, ni, si, si, ta. Sa, la, pe, no, eh, ta, eh, ni, tanu, eh, yeah. Sa, se, m, p, f, an, satis, fe, tu. The, Ben, haga, si, ni, ta. Joe, haga, si, ta, na, dos. The, para, eh, eh, he, ring, get, ah. The, mu, eh, eh, ti, ta, fa, mu, ah, mu, 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 di, it, ah, no, eh, man, I, not, ah. Sidoosma si. Ben, eh, talu, don't, cool, no, Sidoosma si, eh, direct, to, eh, ni, commission, eh, chairman, gee, commission. So, tu, eh, eh, me, na, la, go, eh, yeah. Eh, pa, ta, chul, eh, ta, eh, eh, the, direct, so, ta. Lo, ti, she, eh, go, ti, she, eh, go, mu, go, ti, mu, huh. Oh, ku, ka, si, na, ta, so, gee, eh, ta, chag, eh, ni, na, si, no, ta. The, per, eh, eh, ku, eh, ke, this, eh, eh, say, not, ah. Then, ah, for, my, hung, gee, this, eh, eh, ku, mu, kon, ta, eh. Sidoosma si, Madam Chair. Thank you very much for allowing me.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you for being here. Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I don't know, there's much to add. Certainly, for the Gorido brothers, we have seen each other over the years. And certainly, your continued advocacy and you continue to articulate your message. And you continue to stay straight to that message. It hasn't changed. You very much put the face of this whole issue and the injustice that's happened to our people. It's not something that unfortunately has been settled within what we would see as a reasonable time. And certainly, in my comments with Senator Pito, I mean, for those that we can return the land, we should return the land. And for those that we can't, because the land may be used for the airport or whatever the case may be, then that's where we need to address the compensation. And for some, as you mentioned, it's something we're not, they didn't see in their lifetime. Your parents, your grandparents didn't see it in their lifetime. And as we are all getting older, the fight should continue so that ultimately, even though they're not here in this world with us, they will know that, you know, that the fight continued and that we reached the destiny of getting the lands returned back to our people. It's very emotional for me. It's very difficult, even though I'm not of the generation of the war as my grandparents were and what they suffered, what all our parents and grandparents suffered during that time. And we're left to try to address an injustice of the U.S. federal government because we are family here. We're all family here. And we just need to continue to stay on this issue, as challenging as it is, as difficult as it is. We're going to have to come to some decision at some point on how we can best resolve it. And as these properties continue to become, I don't know, as you mentioned, we shouldn't use the word excess, right? Because they're not excess, they're lands of our people. As our lands of our people come back into our possession, then we need to work to get those lands returned. Some have already, but there's still many more, still many more families where these issues need to be addressed. We just will continue to stay persistent. But thank you for your time. Thank you for coming down here and putting a face, a reality for the rest of us of what really it is we need to address. So thank you. And thank you again, Madam Speaker, for your persistence on this issue and having this hearing. I certainly look forward to future hearings so that we can all collectively, as a community, be updated and informed on where we're at. In addition, more importantly, for those that are recipients of having their lands returned. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Taitegui.
Sidoosma si, Madam Speaker, Madam Chair. Buenos, Ben, and Buenos, Joe. Thank you so much for continuing the fight. And like, Miss Limtiaako, don't give up. And I never, I've never known you guys to do that. So it was such a pleasure to be able to see you again. It's been some time, and I don't think it's going to end here. You know, Ben, I've known you for a long time, and you've been an inspiration to me, especially an advocate, you know, in fighting for the people. And I know, Joe, that you've worked over at Department of Parks and Rec and worked with SHIPPO. So you were there at the very beginning during the pillars, when they were discussing, you know, the four pillars. And one of them was the, you know, the net negative that was discussed. And I had a letter from, that was given from Linda, again, at that time, you know, pursuing the fact that the net negative is not being, you know, adhered to. And I know that you guys fought for it. So I wanted to thank you, Joe. I know I didn't have a chance to go to your retirement party, but I want to thank you for all the work that you did at Department of Parks and Rec and helping Linda out. She spoke very highly of you. And don't, lo, Sidoosma si, for the two of you. And again, you know, you've got some fighters up here. So we're going to continue that fight and help you as well. Sidoosma si, Madam Speaker, and thank you for the opportunity.
Sidoosma si, Senator. Senor?
I would like to mention one that through the research of what I'm doing with regards to net negative issues. The principle of net negative is fairly clear and explained by both sides, the Secretary of the Navy and Governor Guam. I know, I believe it started with Governor Cabo. The safety zone and the training areas that are now circling around our island, I believe can be subject to the net negative consideration when you consider you that it appears that Guam is now in the middle of a military base. And, you know, so that's the net negative effect. It's not only land, but the sea, the EEZ, and the air that we have.
And, Senor, we haven't even touched on that topic today, but I agree with you completely that an assessment of the lands that have been gained, such as surface danger zones and others, you know, by the military, they also should be addressed and accounted for. And I agree that this, these lands that I'm talking about, that we brought up today, are just a small part. And, you know, excess lands by the military is, again, just a small description of what we are really dealing with. And we're talking about massive land takings, a plan to take all land on Guam. And all of this was brought forth, again, in the testimony in the Tamor Land Trust case. And you brought it through all these years. So I want to thank you again for all your work. Sidoosma si.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our final witness today is Mr. John Cruz. And Mr. Vincent Cabrera.
And Mr. Vincent Cabrera. There's two more, just the two more. That's it. Thank you for staying. Okay, thank you for the brief recess, for resetting some things here. And so now we will begin with Mr. John Cruz.
Is this on? Which one is on? Come over there. Okay. Okay, my name is John Cruz. Actually grew up in Temuning, but in 1953. Before that, we were living in Manilo. And of course, they first took our property in Manilo. And they call it Valu, Manilo. And so I don't know if the land is under my grandfather's name or my dad's name, because we're all in one big little community. And the closest house to the back road of Anderson was my dad's house. That's where I first remember living. And then to the east of it is my grandfather and to the west of it is one of my uncle. And then further down toward Barigada, toward their, all my uncles, my Nina, the Garcia, and all the, they call it the Chalat family. So as you might wonder, I am a Chalat family. My dad is, the family name of my dad is Chalat. Of course, my mom's family name is Rosario Castro, and Rosario is Nganga. So I guess you could consider, I joke around, I said I'm a Chalat Nganga. So anyway, going back to the property, I understand that they were planning on building a hospital over there. But I don't think it's a good place. And a couple of reasons. One is, the hospital used to be in San Antonio Road in Temuning. And we abandoned that and went little west of it. And I understand that their parishes landed, gave that land to the government of Guam for the hospital. And we abandoned it, went little west, built another building over there. And now we're going to abandon that and go to Manilo. My, I, my thinking is, why don't we go back to the old hospital? Tear that down. In fact, it's probably all torn down by now. But we should go back over there and build that hospital back there. And the reason why I think it's a better place is, first of all, it's already belonged to the government of Guam. Or as I understood, it belongs to the government of Guam. And right now it's not being used. It's just a jungle now. It's abandoned place. Why don't we go back over there and clean it up and build the hospital right there? The road to there, San Antonio Road, is seven lane, there's seven lane on it. It's where emergency vehicle be more, more safe to go to the hospital through there than being in Manilo. The back road of Anderson, everybody knows, is the worst road in the island. And I heard rumors that they're making it four lane right now. I passed by over there two days, three days ago. And I noted there's just backfilling, there are edges and building. You know, that's not going to be a safe place. It's going to be worse. That hospital is going to be worse if they put the hospital over there. Because then you're going to have the ambulance going up and down that road. What, for four lanes? And if you miss the four lanes, you end up on those telephone poles that are all lined up up there. So if they're going to build a hospital over there, then they're going to have to build a road, not a half-assed road, but a good solid concrete road. And make it wide enough that you has at least two lanes up and two lanes down, or three lanes up and three lanes down. Because I'll tell you another thing. When ambulance coming, coming down the road, everybody's going to be moving out of the, out of the road. You're going to have to have a wider road than, so you're going to have to have a lot of properties. You have to have to move back away from the road to be safe. I really, really believe that it's going to be a dangerous road if you put a hospital over there. And just fix, fix those roads, it'll be a what, four lanes road? You get an ambulance going down, everybody's going to move into the right. If you don't have that much space, what are they going to, you know, you're going to, it's going to end up a more dangerous road. And not only that, that's probably the only road that's more kind of straight road down. And a lot of people go over there and race over there because it's a straight road. The racetrack is over there also. So we're going to build a hazardous, a very hazardous road over there if they're going to do it the way I've seen being done right now. I really, really believe that we should go back and rebuild the hospital that it used to be. This idea of just moving from one place to another, abandoning the places, I don't think it's a good idea. It's enough that where people are abandoning vehicles around the island. And we're abandoning buildings too. So I think we need to go back and we're better off, it costs less more to build a hospital where it used to be, because they already got the road, than building that hospital in Manilo. And that's only one way. How about going from Mariso? Or going, coming from Iran, or coming from Ghana? There's, the roads are not that safe. They're not that wide around that area. It's going to cost a lot more money to build a hospital in the long run. Of course, if they build it over there, our concern is, and I really believe, and I like the idea that they're going to give the land back to the original owner first, rather than give it to the, just let Guam take over like the military. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cruz. Mr. Vincent Cabrera? Thank you for waiting all this time to testify. I very much appreciate it, both of you. Mr. Cabrera?
Speaker, Madam Chair, Senator Taiti, Senator Brown, and Senator Taitikwe. My name is Vincent Flores Cabrera. I'm here to represent my mother, Margarita Tenorio Flores Cabrera Pereira. I didn't see her brother today, but her brother, Henry Tenorio Flores, I'm here to represent him if he, since he's not here today. My mom is 92. She's presently in the States because of COVID. She just celebrated her 92 birthday on March 14th. I come here today because of the recent, actually, this list that came out of Candid News. And my mom's name is actually the first one on top. And I decided to just come down and give a testimony. The land that we're talking about is directly right across the GPA new facility. And the reason why we actually, that property there is part of the additional property that was given away, was given back to the original landowners. We found that one out because of the fact that Congressman Underwood at that time wanted to build a school there in that area as well. And in 2001, I found out about that. And I spoke to people and we had to do this affidavit on behalf of my mom. And they processed paperwork which was given by the ancestral land commission. And during that whole process, from 2000, from May 31st, 2001, until 5/23/2011, Senator Vincent Pangolinan was the one that brought up this transferring of my mom's property. Lot number 2517. After 5/23/2011, the land was given back to my mom July 5th, 2013. I have the award of land recovery, the affidavit of transfer, and the quick claims deed. All of my possession, and this was an easy process. Although it took this long, 2001 to 2011, and then finally making it to law to return it back to us in 2013, she has that property. And this is the one that's directly right across the entrance of GPA. My mom's brother is, property is the one that that house sits on right now. And to the left of it is my mom's property. And further down, the way the map is, how the map, actually the land is formed, it's at a point, so it stops there. How we got to know all of this was because of this property map. And with this property map, it tells you all the people, there's all the names, my mom's name and my uncle's name included. It shows very distinctly where the properties are. It shows distinctly where you, where they want to build a new hospital. And the reason why I'm here is because of that property that's right in front of all of that property that is planned for the hospital. It's because of the fact that that land fronting it is the entrance to where they want to build the hospital. So how the land, the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission, at that time, they searched, and that's how they found me. And then, because my mom again was off island, and I did the proper paperwork, and it was all processed. So bill number 20631 was the actual bill that transferred the land. The land was given back from the federal government to Gov Guam. Gov Guam then transferred it to my mom with all of these documents that I have in front of me. So I'm just, I'm just asking, or I'm just here to testify that my mom is still alive. And so if she's still alive, at least grant her that to have additional land back from her father. And plainly states on this map who her father is. Manuel Flores. Because of the Capessa family. And a majority of all those properties that were in there too, describes that there was a lot of forces there as well, as well as Mr. Cruz. So in closing, I just like to say, there is a process already. There is a way to get this bill through so that that way, the landowners can get their land back. And what I've listened through all the testimonies and what the Guam Ancestral Lands has been trying to do with the limited resources they have, this is back to square one, where how do we get this process done? So really appreciate, Mr. Birch, what you do and your staff, even though you're very limited. But there is a way. It can be done. And I just, I just don't understand, because we are proof that we can get the land back, but there's still additional land that still has to be returned. So I ask that you continue to work on getting the land back to the original ancestors. Because as the fellow mentioned before us, it's not excess land. It's excess land to the federal government, but that was my grandfather's land. So in closing, I'd just like to say thank you for the opportunity and the time so that way we can open up this discussion and get to a point where we can get the land back. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cabrera. Glad to meet you and to learn of your mother, and that she's doing well, and that about your grandfather's land. I did see the name on the list, and so I'm very glad to see you in person and know that that is your family. And Mr. Cruz, again, sisus maasi. And I'm going to ask Senator Pito if you have any questions or comments.
No question, Madam Chair. I just want to thank Mr. Cabrera, Mr. Cruz for sharing their thoughts. And I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Cabrera, and it can be done. What we need to do is just go forward and check the experts so we can, we can just go ahead and finalize and satisfy your testimony this afternoon. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Certainly also want to extend my appreciation to Mr. Cruz and Mr. Cabrera for coming and providing their testimony, not just to us, but to the public as well with regards to your history and your situation, especially as you related about your mom and her property being returned. We know that lands happen in return, that there is a process. And of course, we still have to address how do we deal with those landowners that because of current land use are not able to get their lands returned. I'm sure at some point, we're going to have to wrestle and come to a resolution. With regards to the hospital, I mean, it's, I appreciate you bringing up your points and concerns. I appreciate you bringing up your points and concerns. I mean, I, as a legislator, as I'm sure all my fellow colleagues, we've not deliberated the issue with regards to a new hospital or where it's going to be located or how it's going to be paid for. We, as you have heard that through the media. So I'm sure ultimately, there's going to have to be a collective decision made on where that new hospital is going to be built, how it's going to be paid for. And certainly, we know there's a need for it. There's a need to upgrade the healthcare services that we provide to our people. But I understand your concern and your message is, you know, don't put it on my ancestral land that I have yet to have returned. So I certainly appreciate your message and thank you for relaying that. And again, thank you for hanging in there and waiting so patiently this afternoon to provide your testimony. With that, thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Tagui?
Thank you so much. Yes, it's getting kind of late, and I always hate to be the one between you and dinner, so I'll make this quick. Adonkulu situs massi and for being here and waiting this time, long time to testify. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you.
Thank you. And so, Mr. Birch, I want to thank you again for the list that you created and Mr. Guan Guerrero helped to create. It looks like it actually reached those who we were aiming for. So I'm very glad about that. And we're going to continue to do whatever we can to make sure that we can reach those who are listed and make sure that we can get their land returned to them as soon as possible. Okay, so we're not.
Madam Chair, can I, can I just?
Sure, Senator Pito, yes.
I just wanted to assure Ron, and can we talk later on regarding? Because, you know, you had mentioned that, and you have sure reach of personnel. So maybe we can work things out and give you additional people for your, for your agency, sir? So just call me up and we'll work on it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Senator. Okay, so there were others signed up to testify, but it, but there are no longer any, any, there's no longer anyone left to testify? So hopefully, we'll hear from them in another way. And of course, I'm going to advertise right now, we could put up on the screen very briefly, our last slide. This is the contact information for the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. And we are encouraging those who need assistance or who would like copies of any of the documents that we talked about here to call 649-5263, extension 816. They also have an email address, admin@galc.guam.gov. And they also have a website, dlm.guam.gov, where you might be able to find the list of, or many of these documents as well. And again, my website is senatorterlahe.com. You can find all the documents that we talked about today, the list of property owners at the Eagles Field or that property there, the list of properties that since 2017 have been listed or slated for return as excess, the list of, in, from the Secretary of the Navy in 2020 that he has slated that is possible to return, and those, of course, that were denied. And so all those documents. And if you need any help, please also call my office at 4723586. Prestatlu, situs massi to all the commissioners, Mr. Chair, and to Mr. Director, and to most, especially those who have come here to testify and to remind us of why we are, you know, why these processes are important. Because there are very basic human rights that we are talking about. We're talking about injustices that many before us have tried to, to solve, tried to make the best of after many, many years. And so we are not giving up either, and we are going to continue to work. And I thank again my colleagues, these senators, for, for being with me all this time and to hear every single one of you, situs massi. So there being no additional testimony in this hearing, the public hearing is now adjourned. And the time is 6:25 PM. Situs massi.